All right, thank you, Chris. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 6, 2022 Meeting of the Orange Town Planning Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti.
Tam Retrantallis, Administrative Assistant.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demerjin, Zoning Administrator.
All right, thank you very much. We have kind of a lengthy agenda tonight, so we'll get going right away. First item on the agenda is a review of the minutes from the November 15, 2022 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look those over? I had no comments, Tammy. I don't know, but anybody else?
Nothing.
Judy, Kevin?
All good. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 15, 2022 meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next item on the agenda is old business. Anybody want to bring up anything under that topic?
Yeah, sorry to add to the agenda. First, I reached out to Jack to find out a status report on the Vineyard Litigation, the Vineyard Denial Litigation. And I just asked him to respond.
They did, so they did appeal as of right now because Vin had to recuse himself as one of his associates was an abutting neighbor and was involved in the application process. Attorney Jeffrey DiNofrio, he's out of North Haven. He will be handling the case on behalf of the town. I know we are putting the return of record together right now in anticipation for that, so.
Okay, so for the benefit of the audience and myself, on a bumper sticker, we're answering the summons and complaint.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and the process is engaged?
Ongoing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next, I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting in January, a contemplation of a change, some change of language to that accessory structure where we're giving discretion to vary those. They're getting just out of control.
Huge.
So I think a good first step would be to make sure that in return for approval of something like that, that they were not hooked up to sewer systems or sanitary systems so that they can't be turned into dwellings.
But allowing for electric.
Yeah.
Do you have a particular amendment?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it to Jack. I'm gonna get it to Jack so we could look at it and then notice it or whatever we gotta do.
I was gonna ask Jack, under his report, to comment on the addition going up on Ridge Road. Several people have asked me about that, and until a week or two ago, I didn't really have the right answer for them, but.
Right, so.
You know what, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the eyesore.
Yeah, long story short is, we did not approve that application. So the applicant, right, so the applicant decided to attach it to the house. So it essentially turned into a very large addition. I did talk it over with Attorney Moreno, and there's not a ton we could do at that point. I mean, we do have other houses in town with something similar. Doesn't quite stick out like that does, but at that point, you know, it's attached to the primary dwellings.
I assume he didn't need any variances. He did everything within the confines of those side yards and setbacks and what do you call it, reserve areas for the septic?
I guess, I guess the, the upshot of it is you can do an addition as ugly as you would like.
Yep.
Or as, you know, overbearing as you would like, as long as it meets the zoning requirements. And it doesn't even come before the commission.
Building.
So it's.
It's no longer an accessory structure. It's attached to the primary dwelling.
We really have no jurisdiction on that, you know?
And also, in the last meeting, we discussed that since the inaction, the action by this commission allowing cannabis retailers as a special use permit in the C1 zones, the state modified the enabling legislation that basically opened up the town for more than one use. And Attorney Moreno looked at it and suggested that it's a very straightforward to, because of that change, rather than the distance regulation.
Right, we wanted, we, we were under the impression it was just gonna be one based on the initial regulation from the state.
Right.
And now it could be more than that.
They silently did away with the per capita requirement.
We're gonna amend our regulations to limit one for, you know, one in the town of Orange.
So I was wondering if, since it's pretty much that straightforward, if we're all in agreement, if that language could be drafted and noticed so that at the next meeting, we can get it taken care of so we're not dealing with this again.
Let's get that on the agenda for January 3, I think it is.
Well, the question is, can, can we, between now and January 3, get it noticed?
I don't know, yeah, but we'll have to.
It really depends on what we get the language. You know, typically, we would, if, on our own initiative for a text change, we would look at the language before us, before noticing anything, to kind of expedite the process, make sure that we're happy with it, and then notice it, hold the public hearing, vote whichever way the commission sees.
Probably in February, probably before we vote on it.
Which is, comes to the point of my question. If we agree that Vin, the town attorney is gonna draft a piece of language.
Why don't we have him draft?
Why don't we have him draft it, notice that language, we'll look at it before the meeting? I can't imagine.
We could always tweak it at the meeting.
We can always tweak it at the meeting.
So let's do that.
Okay, yeah, and Vin is aware of that. I had emailed him.
Assuming we can meet the, you know, the notice time deadlines and all that, let's get that on our agenda for January 3.
Okay, so we'll have that language as well as language limiting the accessory structures.
Yeah, but that one's not gonna get noticed. I'll just.
That one's a little less.
No, there's, that doesn't have the same. I, I'm feeling a time pressure.
Understood.
You're not feeling a time pressure on that?
I'm not feeling a time pressure on the second one.
Yeah, we typically don't have very many of those. I know the last one we looked at on Grassy Hill did.
Couple a year.
Yeah, I personally, I, that was the first accessory structure that I've run into with a septic system attached to it like that. So it's not the most common thing, but I definitely agree that we should address that.
Yeah, I'd like to not run into it again.
Understood.
Okay.
All right, anything else under old business? How about under new business? All right, Jack, anything on your report?
We went over already a lot of what I was going to cover. The last thing is, Ozzy, I think a couple weeks ago, you asked about that swim school that was going to go in on the plaza with, in the Christmas tree shop plaza. They never reached out to the building department. I think they decided to, or I'm assuming without talking to them, that they decided not to go that route.
Right.
So I would assume that they're not planning on coming in here.
They haven't contacted you?
Not at all, no. And I spoke with the building inspector about it, wondering if they submitted plans, and they had no idea, so.
How, how long is their approval good for?
Two years, I believe. That would, that was not a special permit. I would have to relook at it, but I believe two years, and then we could offer extensions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that's.
Question over, Jack? Okay. All right, then let's get right to our public hearings. First item on the agenda is petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by the Montar Group. This is for self-storage facilities on Salem Lane or in that neighborhood. The applicant is present.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Montar Group. I apologize I couldn't be with you at the last hearing, but I appreciate your accommodating my colleague, Attorney Sutgens. I also wanted to thank Attorney Shansky for her permitting us to go first last time. I guess we've carried that tradition forward to this, to this evening, but I promise you, Marsha, that I think we'll be short. So I handed out two things for the record. One is a revision to the revision of the proposed regulation amendments, and I'll explain what I mean by that. And then also a pamphlet that my client, Dan Moore, is gonna be taking you through this label Self-Storage Development, Montar Group LLC. So when I say the amendment to the amendment, so we originally submitted a regulation amendment. After our first hearing, we amended Section 3 to eliminate some architectural language and just make specific reference to your site plan requirements, which offer specifics as to architecture, you know, in the town. So that was the first change that we made. After the last meeting, we made other additions, other, other changes to subsection 1 in terms of other distance requirements for a parcel where self-storage could be permitted. So, but what I had done in the interim, I had added the language to number 1 to the original application rather than the second one. So what's sitting before you now is the application as it currently stands, which is the changes to Section 1 from the last meeting and the changes to Section 3 from the meeting before that. And so let me just describe briefly what I, what we've done in Section 1 to address the commission's comments from last time. So the original application said the subject property must be located on Dead End Street. I think someone raised the issue, well, what if there's, there's properties that could be viewed as being on a Dead End Street but actually on Marshall Road? So he said, has an address on a Dead End Street to further curtail the potential sites where, for a self-storage facility. B is, and we also added this, is located within 500 feet of Marshall Road. C is a carryover from the original, is located within 600 feet of a non-access highway line of Interstate 95 road system, or its access ramps. And D is also carryover with a maximum of three acres. And in that pamphlet that Dan will go through, you will see a map of the entire LI2 zone and other surrounding sites. And you will see that virtually everything is excluded from, for the potential of self-storage. Now, I may reasonably disagree with the concern that there may be another self-storage. You're in industrial zone, doesn't seem like a bad place for it, but candidly, we don't care. If it's the commission's wisdom to, you know, limit this to specific properties with the LI2 zone, then we are certainly not one to quibble with that, and we're here to help facilitate the commission's desire. So unless you have any questions about the language that we've added, I would ask my client, Dan Moore, to come up and walk you through the pamphlet that I handed out.
Just on subsection 4.
Yep.
Notwithstanding the requirements of Section 383-71 herein, the maximum floor area shall be 140%. Should it say 140% of?
Well, I think that's.
Lot size, is that?
Well, no, I think that's inherent in the definition. I think floor area ratio, I can, I can look up the definition while Dan is speaking, but I think it's inherent in the definition.
I think that's probably right, it just didn't seem like a complete sentence to me.
And with respect to the text, Attorney Nuff, when you say is located within 500 feet of Marshall Road, is that the entire property is located within that cone, or, you know, if you nip a corner, that works?
I think it's, you know, a portion of it must be located within 500 feet. I mean, we can certainly, we, you know, I don't know how far 500 feet from Marshall Road extends into our property, but we can find that out and then make it, make it, we can tweak the language if necessary.
Well, at the last meeting, we had requested that if you were capable of generating it, that you show and exhibit showing how the distance requirements affected your property.
Right, so, so that's in the pamphlet, it's in the second last page of the handout.
Ozzy, don't, don't we want that language to read no, no nearer than 500 feet to Marshall Road? Because if you look at this, this map, it looks to me like there are two developable parcels. The first two on Salem.
They're the closest to Marshall Road.
That are closest to Marshall Road.
No, so, so the ones that are located, that are identified in brown, those don't have Salome addresses. Those have Marshall Road addresses. That, that's, that's the purpose of the, adding the language, has an address on it at Dead End Street.
Both do, John? Because when I drove down Salem, it looked like those houses fronted, at least one of them's fronted on Salem.
But they have addresses on Marshall.
Marshall, okay. That clarifies that. Thank you.
Again, I don't know whether you know whether the entirety of these parcels are within 500 feet or just a portion of it.
I think just a portion of it.
Okay.
I don't know who the gentleman is, he's responding.
Okay, yes. Yeah, he'll identify himself now. So, so, so the answer is, a portion of the property has to be within 500 feet, not the entirety. I mean, we can certainly measure it and tweak it as necessary, but I think you'll find that, you know, any further revision doesn't get us anywhere in terms of eliminating other lots. Dan Moore with Montar Group.
I'm sorry, Dan.
Moore, M-O-O-R-E. And cognizant of the full schedule tonight, I'll skip through some of the stuff about who Montar is and why we want, we want to develop this property. Rest assured, we have significant experience in the storage industry, and I wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't believe this, this was a needed, a needed service here. Some of the community benefits that we will provide is obviously job creation during construction. We also believe we provide a necessary service, helps small businesses grow by giving them some storage space options for smaller businesses that can't afford a warehouse, and also keeps them from having to work out of their private residences, gives the residents opportunity to store valuables when they're downsizing, moving, especially during these unstable times right now. And also gives larger season, larger ability to store larger seasonal items such as patio furniture, et cetera, during the winter, ski equipment, that kind of thing during the summer. We also have very low impact on any of the town services. Obviously, no, no additional students will be added to the school system, and we have a very low consumption of domestic wire, sanitary sewer. However, we do pay, we will significantly increase the tax revenue, as you'll see some of the other exhibits I've put in here. Additionally, we, storage produces significantly less traffic as compared to any of the other approved uses, and actually compared to any use period. And I've given a little, a little example of that based on the Transportation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers' manual trip generation. Tax generate, tax revenue generation on the property will be significantly higher than the, the, the current tax rate that's being on it, and actually will be very, very comparable to the, the delta between what the pre-development and post-development change was for the Homewood Suites that's adjacent or right next door to us. Again, all of this with very minimal impact, again, to the town services, no, no, and no impact to the school systems. The next several slides really just are reiterations from the last meetings regarding sightlines on I-95, to John's point regarding the, the architectural standards have been changed. But I would like to speak to, directly about the narrowing of the, the narrowing of the amendment to only apply to the specific, the specific sites. So if you go back to that, the second to last page here on the affected properties, I've shown the, the entire surrounding area and not just the LI2. As you can see, everything in the red is, is not LI2, so obviously this, this amend, this tax amendment would not affect that. Anything in the pink is greater than three acres, which is restricted by our tax amendment. Anything in the yellow, and you see the green line is the 600 feet from, from the I-95. Anything in yellow is greater than 600 feet from that. The two brown properties on Marshall have an address on Marshall, not on Salome. And then the blue, the three blue properties are all less than two acres, which is part of the LI2, the current LI2 zoning ordinance. And in fact, the two that are south on Salome Lane there, which would be within the 600 feet, if you add them together, they're still less than two acres. So they would have to come in, if someone were to buy both those properties, they would have to come in and, and request a variance. So that said, the, the only properties that, that this tax amendment will allow to become, be storage is, is our two properties. What's not in here, I do, would want to address one of the comments, and I don't recall who had, who had asked about it, but with regard to creating self-storage row back through there, if Salome were to be extended, if those two properties south on Salome were stored currently, I wouldn't be interested in putting storage. It's just not, we're not, we're not convenient storage or something like that that can be right next to each other. We do need, a competition ratio is a, is an important factor in what we do and how we do it. We don't need to be directly across the street from our competitors, so.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? You have any further?
No, I, I mean, I guess I was assuming there's gonna be some other questions or follow-up or comments, but obviously, you know, so that concludes the presentation. I, you know, we didn't think that it required a lengthy discourse with the, you know, in terms of our presentation, but, you know, if there are any hesitations or concerns, I think we've really tried to address, you know, every possibility that the commission raised throughout the course of the, the hearings so far.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're satisfied with that language in subsection 1 then?
Right. I see David. I see it as possible.
Well, I think it accomplishes what we set out to accomplish. It's only, there's only one parcel, or the applicant's parcels that are eligible. And as long as you don't think we need to make a change on 4, I don't know, what did, what did you think of it?
Right, so, yeah, that was gonna be my question for John. The maximum floor area is 80% currently with the LI2 regs, and you're proposing 140, providing 136. Can you just explain why we have to almost double it, or why you're asking for that?
Right, it's sort of the nature of self-storage. I mean, it doesn't require a lot of parking. You know, your floor area ratio and your regulation, your bulk requirements are sort of odd for the LI2, because you're allowed to have a rather tall building, I think it's 60, 60 feet. But if you actually compute a 60-story building, which would be what, you know, three or potentially four stories, within all the setbacks, you'd be way over that 80% floor area ratio. So it's, it's sort of the nature of.
that 80 percent floor area ratio. So it's, it's sort of the nature of, of self-storage that doesn't require a lot of parking. And so in terms of, you know, what, what you're concerned about with impacts from floor area ratio is, you know, it could be impervious coverage. Well, you know, rather than utilizing the, the land for parking, we're utilizing for building. It's just, and, and I, and I think that part of it is just inherent in your regulations, that you allow a 60, 60-foot building, or 60-foot high building, but, you know, you have a floor area ratio maximum of 80 percent.
That ratio is set up to encourage a park-type office development, because at that ratio of 80 percent FAR, you wind up with about 50 percent open space.
Right. You know, you know, and-
But that's not what we're talking about.
Right. And, and, you know, we said from the very beginning, from the first night, that the town has done a wonderful job building out its LI2 zone. However, and I call them the remnant parcels, because I think it's, I think that's a relevant term, that these are sort of leftover pieces that don't fit the, the original mold of, of the LI2 zone, that if you look at UI or any of the nearby uses that I recited on the first night, those bulk requirements make a lot of sense. When you're talking about something that's less than three acres, and you're applying the set of standards that are more applicable to somebody that's far larger than that, you know, that's the other reason why we need some relief.
Yeah, I think we said the last meeting that the project's just not viable.
Correct.
Right. But I'm just wondering, like, you know, say there's a reuse of an existing LI2 parcel. If we forget what's left, and they're tiny little ones, but if there's a reuse, what is the impact of, of a 140 FAR in, in a potential new project, be it biotech or, you know?
It would have absolutely none.
Okay.
Because this only applies to self-storage. And keep in mind, keep in mind the power that you wield when someone is applying, like us, for a regulation amendment. You are acting in a legislative capacity. You can do whatever you want. And, you know, I know there's, there's danger of reminding you of that in the context that we're here, but, but it's important for you to keep that in mind, because you have a safety net. Someone, an applicant who comes before you and, and they were to say to you for biotech or whatever, by the way, you gave them a floor area ratio of 140 percent, so therefore you have to do it for us too. No, you don't. You don't have to do anything. You are, you are acting with complete discretion. So there is, you are setting no precedent, you're not setting the bar, you can, you can evaluate each regulation amendments, each zone change amendments on its own accord.
Okay. Anything further for John? All right. And I think we need to request a comment from the public. Is anybody interested in commenting? Mr. Ziole?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think that probably a little history lesson on this one would help. The parcels that you're talking about tonight are a fragment of what was part of a family farm. There were three families up there that were all interconnected, the Salemies, the Farinas, and the Pacillos. And then when the highway went through, it fractured all of those farms. And, you know, with time, they've all passed away. There were many brothers and sisters in those groups, and with time, they've all passed and their heirs have either sold the property or are hoping to sell it as of tonight. If you recall, right across the street from this, where Mr. Moore referenced, the total of those other four little houses over there, those were also all Salome houses too. Evidently, according to history, Grandma Salome left a building lot, or gave a building lot to each of her sons, but I think the daughters had to fend for themselves, is kind of what I've heard a little bit from history with that. But that was property that was owned by, which you heard many times, by Mr. Delito and Mr. Gordon over the time, and then they have since sold that property to another owner. So eventually, something will come for those parcels as well. They've been combined, and that will happen there. These two parcels, one had a house on it that was demolished many years ago, and the other parcel was never developed that adjoined it. However, there's a road there that only went as far as the driveway for the, where the house was, which is the first parcel of these two parcels. And when we were talking about the zone there that was going to be train station and housing and shops and all with Mr. Crowley many years ago, we had to clear, get clear title because way back when they didn't, the town didn't get, you wanted to build a road, you built a road and paved the road and you went from there. So we had to go to court, get clear title and all, for the rest of that roadway and all. And then after that zone didn't happen, the transit-oriented zone up there with the train stop and all, Mr. Crowley sold his property to Yale. And behind these two parcels is all owned by Yale. To the rear of it, across the rear driveway that used to go to the trucking terminal down there in between Salimi's and Farina's, is also owned by Yale. And then there's the rear parking lot inside of the Homewood Suites Hotel there. So there's no room for any change over on that side or impact to a, a zone that's going to be different to getting this type of use there. It is a low-traffic user. It fits that spot very well. It's approximately to the front boundary line of that property, about 400 feet, because you have the School for Special Need Students and the former helicopter support building. And then there's one home right behind that, which I believe is owned by that same school. That was a Salome family member home there. And then this property is the boundary line east of that. So it, it, it's a good fit for that area. It's right off the highway. It's on Marshall Road where we have abundance of traffic already. And I think it would be a, a good fit there. Currently, you're receiving, I don't know, I think $400 or $500 maybe in taxes a year on it as vacant land. This would be significantly more with minimal impact to town services, whether it be fire, police, paramedic, school system, any of those situations. So I think that the distance from Marshall Road is not a problem. The view from Marshall Road is certainly not a problem. And I think it's one of only a few fits of things in town that we don't have. We don't have much, we have U-Haul does self-storage. We don't have a funeral home, and we don't have a couple other things, but I think this would be an improvement to that location up there. So I hope you consider that use and location and see that it's a fit, good fit for the town.
Thank you, Jim.
That's it.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment? Okay. What do we think about needing any more information to make a decision on the application? Should we close the public hearing?
I have no problem with closing it.
There's no, there are no department head sign-offs on the zone change, on an amendment to the regulations. Nobody's there. All right. Paul, are you prepared to make a motion to that effect?
Whoop, sorry. Move that we close the public hearing?
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous? Well, I think at this point, it's just a, you know, a matter of us making a decision on it. Seems to me it, it makes sense to, a good use for that parcel. You know, it's a, it's, as Attorney Nuff pointed out a couple of times, it's, you know, sort of this remnant parcel, a remnant sort of parcel, that may not good, may not be that good for anything but something like the intended use, the proposed use. And for all the other advantages that Mr. Ziole just decided and that the applicant has cited, I'd, I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, just so we know, the tax generation is not a legitimate zoning concern. So that, it's nice to hear, but it doesn't come into our decision-making. It shouldn't.
No. The other, the other thing is, I, I think we can safely adopt Attorney Nuff's, the applicant's recitation of conformity with the Plan of Conservation and Development on page six of their original application. First bullet point, development strategies, community structure and business and economic development, the southern part, parts of Orange are considered an economic area, while the northern part is considered a living area. The Plan of Conservation and Development states that it is the intention of the plan that this overall, overall philosophy and structure be continued as part of the strategy to continue to promote business development. So I think the, the idea is, is consistent in, with the Plan of Conservation and Development in that respect. And he also says more broadly, the Plan of Conservation and Development recognizes the country's changing demographics that necessarily include the town, including people living longer, a desire to downsize, perhaps into an age-restricted community, adult children living with their parents, and a preference for many to rent versus own. These demographics, demographics also drive the need for self-storage facilities in close proximity to people's homes, because often a person's or a family's change in living circumstances results in the need for, for personal, for the storage of personal belongings. So again, that is in our Plan of Conservation and Development. And I think this proposal satisfies the intent of those pla, those provisions. Anybody else?
Those are my first choice for this particular situation, but I think Attorney Nuff made a, well, it's not a compelling case, certainly a very good case for these kinds of parcels. Ozzy said it pretty well. I, I think I've been persuaded that it's not a, it wasn't a extraordinarily outlandish fit. It just wasn't allowed in that zone in this particular case. I, I think these parcels are going to be, and have been neglected. I think they're going to be tough fits in the future. I think this is a good, a good solution for developing these kinds of parcels.
I think we've been pretty patient about properties in the LI2, and we've waited, and we've gotten some good things out of that, that patience. But this, you know, I can't see, we're not going to get a, we're not going to get a manufacturing facility on a three-acre parcel, you know?
It's a very low intensity of use.
Yeah.
It's on a small parcel.
All right. Any further comments? Tom, Kevin? All right, then. Sounds like we could entertain a, a motion to approve the application.
We do need ineffective date-
With effective date.
-with our motion.
A move that we, move that we, which one is it here? On this 88 Marshall, right?
No.
Oh, Montar, okay. A move that we approve the petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations, Article 8, Section 383-66, and Article 18, I think, right? Yes. Section 383 and 174 submitted by the Montar Group to allow self-storage facility in the, the light industrial two district by special use permit. I find that the, the application's in conformity with the Plan of Conservation and Development, and it's a good use of that property, with the effective date being, what do, what do I have to put in there?
We could, Friday of this week, that-
Friday, the ninth, December 9th, 2022.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Is somebody prepared to second it?
Second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tarenti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One up, one opposed. All right. Robin, do you need any, any time to switch over to? No? All right.
I'm just letting it roll.
Oh, all right, good. All right, then. The next item on our agenda is the prop, relates to the property of 175 Boston Post Road. It's an application to open a cannabis establishment with a drive-through service window and an adaptive reuse of a previously developed site. I see that the applicant's attorney is present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am indeed. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing LLC and Green Thumb Industries in connection with the applications that are pending before the commission. I am here this evening with Anne Marie Zamba, who is the Municipal Compliance Officer and Counsel for Land Use Matters at Green Thumb, Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering, which was the engineer of record for the previously approved site plan on which the former bank sits, Rich DeAndrea from Colliers Engineering, our traffic expert, our traffic engineer, Tim Gorman, the Director of Security from Green Thumb Industries, and the gentleman, and I apologize, I have to look for his name, from Schremshock Architects is also here by telephone. Jim Garrison, thank you so much. I needed that tickle. I don't think I've ever met him in person, so. So, thank you. So we have a, a reasonably full menu this evening, because at the last meeting, we were not participants. We were listening to the intervenors. And to that extent, I have a letter for the commission, and there are sufficient copies here for the intervenors as well. If you could please pass those around. This letter is exclusively dedicated to 22A19, the Environmental Intervention Statute pursuant to which three neighbors have petitioned the commission. And I heard a significant amount of confusion associated with this statute, notwithstanding counsel's explanation to the commission, and I thought it would be prudent to walk through this with you and with specific respect to the petitions that were filed. And then the team will address other outstanding questions that have emerged over these weeks, though I, I'm going to anticipate some of the information because I re-listened to the November hearing. And I want to assure the commissioners who inquired that we will be establishing that the site plan meets your current engineering standards. And it is the case that contrary to the discourse that went on from a petitioner and members of the commission, that the water that used to come off the cannibes that want to be removed, that now will be direct, directly falling on pavement, is treated. It will go into the same underground utility that treats the rest of the parking lot. So nothing is untreated about stormwater runoff. That was misconstrued or misunderstood in the last meeting, and that's sort of a highlight of the places that we're going this evening. But, but let's talk about 22A19 for a minute, because it's important for the commission to understand that it does not, the filing of a 22A19 petition does not convert you into a little mini environmental protection agency. And that is exactly the language that the, that the cases use. The point about 22A19 is that any person, and that means an individual, a corporation, an LLC, a land trust, a conservation group, a New Yorker, any person can petition in a proceeding to allege the reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution to natural resources of the state of Connecticut. Here comes the important part, ladies and gentlemen, within the jurisdiction of the commission. The filing of a 22A19 petition does not expand your jurisdiction. And that's a highlight of some very specific findings that the commission needs to make. For example, you do not regulate air quality. There's nothing about Section 8-2 of the Connecticut general statutes or any regulation in the Orange zoning regulations that empowers this commission to consider air pollution. Your whole traffic jurisdiction is about congestion. Your whole traffic jurisdiction is about congestion and safety, not even about numbers of cars per se, congestion and safety. And so the idea that somebody files a petition, also litter, litter is not within your jurisdiction. And finally, inland wetlands. There was substantial concern expressed, and the manner in which I'm describing it is very important under 22A19 as well. Expressed concerns are not evidence. They do not qualify as evidence of unreasonable pollution. The idea of an environmental intervention places a burden on the petitioner to produce evidence, expert evidence, not opinion, evidence, not speculation, that some reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution, and if I may take a moment to highlight, unreasonable pollution. Because we can agree that some activities are going to lead to pollution. Pollution is not the index. The index is unreasonable pollution. So for each of the intervenors who complained or expressed concern about the inland wetlands, you heard during the November meeting at least once, if not twice, that Mr. Demerjen, the Wetland Enforcement Officer for the Town of Orange, a gentleman who has been certified as an agent from the training at the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, made a determination at the time of the submission of this application that this was not necessary to come to the Inland Wetlands Agency because it is a non-impact activity. It is not, does not have a directing impact on the trout brook. And with respect to the upland review area, the limited site disturbance, 931 square feet of disturbance, is at the remote end of the upland review area, or beyond it, or at the upper end of it, and will be adequately protected by silt fences and soil erosion and sediment controls that are in accord with the 2002 guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. It is objectively a non-issue, but specifically not your issue.
Let me ask just one question.
Yes.
You're saying that the inland wetlands review is unnecessary because of what's intended by way of the work on the property?
Unnecessary because of what?
Because of the work that's intended, you know, the site plan work that's intended.
Correct, and because it is a developed functioning site.
Yeah, but all I'm asking
Yes.
Is, does it relate to the use of the property?
Not at all.
Not, so the question of whether there ought to be an inland wetlands review, how the property is used is irrelevant?
Correct. It is not, in fact, that's a wonderful sort of comparison that the Chair has just invoked because they know more, the inland wetlands agency no more has jurisdiction over what's going on inside the building than you have jurisdiction over their turf, as it were, for site disturbance. And that's why the statute provides that if there is a site that entails disturbance in and around inland wetlands, that that has to be achieved first before they come to you. Well, that has been achieved first in the sign-off of the Wetland Enforcement Officer. Similarly, at the time of sign-off of the Town Engineer and all of the other town departments, each of whom signed off before we ever got here. So, so I don't, and I welcome your questions and this dialogue because I don't want there to be any confusion about the very important 22A19 intervention, but it is not a stop-the-music kind of thing. It comes with a burden of production on the person filing the petition, and critically, it must be within your jurisdiction. It doesn't take you beyond it. And Commissioner Cornell, it was you who said, now we have to yield or develop an environmental impact statement? No, you do not. No, you do not. The petitioner has the burden. And while I'm getting now ahead of myself in my letter, one of the petitioners said, you need to explore feasible and prudent alternatives, which is a construct that emerges under the Wetlands Act and under the 22A19 law. But you do not get to the feasible and prudent alternative analysis until you find unreasonable pollution. Because if there's not unreasonable pollution, then what's being proposed is just fine. So are there any questions?
Getting back to the wetlands review, the Commission versus administratively, is there, what would trigger that with regard to, is it the amount of disturbance on a property? There's not a percentage? If you're doing 1% versus 80%, then you do, like what's, there's no, there's no regulation per se that says this, now you need it, or?
If it were in the wetland, that would trigger review. And if it were proximate and extensive, or had the likelihood of affecting the wetlands, which doesn't even necessarily mean hurt the wetlands, but wants to be reviewed. Because not everything that's reviewed comes with it an assumption that it's got an adverse impact associated with it, it just gets reviewed. And doing 931 square feet of limited site disturbance, remote from the wetland itself and at the very edge of the upland review area, simply really doesn't qualify as something that requires closer review. And that's the judgment that was made by your Wetland Enforcement Officer. And I really encourage you to ask these questions of him, sort of in a more global context, to appreciate the distinction between your diverse jurisdictions. So looking back at my letter, just to make sure that I've covered what I wanted to cover about it, there are other, and I encourage you to read it, not just for the purposes of this application, but I tried to format it in a way that would be useful to you by making the observation that emerged under a petition and then giving you some decisional law that elucidates why what was alleged is not useful. But, yes.
What do you view as the effect of our decision to accept their petitions?
I, like Counsel for the Commission, prefer that commissions err on the side of inclusion, but the mere acceptance of the petition establishes nothing substantively. Because there has to be a closer examination, and one must evaluate the evidence that's been provided. And respectfully, you have received no evidence.
So practically, what rights do the intervenors have now, other than, is it just notice?
They have the rights of notice, and they have the rights of notice.
That's right.
And even if they wanted to challenge a decision by this Commission, they are limited to the environmental issues that they've raised. And because they are out of your jurisdiction largely, almost exclusively, that, you know, it's of limited utility except that it has added a whole nother hearing to these proceedings.
Have they waived their right, Marjorie, as participants as a whole, by virtue of their intervenor status?
Not at all.
I didn't think so.
Not at all. They could have said the same things, and indeed, in many cases, they did say the same things as mere members of the public.
Right, so as a member of the public, they still have the rights to appeal, but if they're going to appeal to an intervener?
If they have standing.
If they have standing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there are other formalities attendant to the petition to intervene, I won't spend a lot more time on it, but this one is quite important. It is a verified petition to intervene that must be filed with the Commission. And you see in the early paragraph of page two of my letter, I describe exactly the specificity of what needs to be alleged, which is lacking in the petitions the Commission received, but, you know, that's sort of a side issue. But a verified petition means that it must be signed before a notary and an author and affirmation taken. Two of the three petitions that you received were not verified petitions. Consequently, that is a finding that this Commission could make, is that the entry as parties was improvidently granted, something the courts like to say at the appellate court after they mistakenly take cert on something. And that is the case of Mr. Glazer's petition and Dr. Park's petition. Neither of them was verified. Ms. Cantio's was. But then, as I go through in my letter, their allegations were extrajurisdictional, not the things in which this Commission decides. Not the inland wetlands review, not the air quality caused by queuing cars, remembering that the bank has three drive-throughs. This Commission approved a bank with three drive-throughs. So the idea of now parsing how many cars are coming through, it's sort of that train may have left the station. Not on a
Could you repeat what you just said?
The fact that there have been three drive-throughs here has established a sort of tolerance here for the idea of queuing. And I'm just saying that as an abstraction, because we have a traffic study, we have a peer-reviewed traffic, all of those questions are addressed separately. I'm just saying that the idea of air quality is not in your jurisdiction, and we're talking about a developed site that admits of a certain use already. So the verifications really, the lack of verifications really disqualify those two petitions, and the content of all of them lacking any evidence of any pollution, unreasonable pollution within your jurisdiction also disqualifies them. The, I've included in footnote one on page three, an homage to stormwater runoff, which is in your jurisdiction, but the 931 and Mr. DiStefano from Bowler Engineering will testify that the 931 square feet that was previously canopy and now on the ground is negligible or less in terms of volume of additional runoff because it was always running off. It is being treated because it will go in the same storm scepter unit that the other runoff goes to. The site plan now shows silt fences, and we have an installation that is consistent with the requirements of the 2004 Connecticut Stormwater Manual and the 2002 Connecticut Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Guidelines. And that gives you your sense of comfort about the conformity of the site plan under your current regulations as an existing, living, breathing site. Now, are there any other questions about 22A19?
It sounds like your intention is just to clear the record on it.
My intention is to help
Because it doesn't seem like it has any real impact. Where do we go from here on the application?
Certainly by the nature of the content of the petitions, it doesn't.
Right.
But it's hanging out there, they've been entered as, yes. So I am both trying to dispel any confusion on the part of the Commission as to what the significance, if any
And you don't want to hear us complain of air pollution?
I am charmed to hear you complain about air pollution, but it's not a factor
It's not, it's not our jurisdiction.
Not your jurisdiction.
So, Marjorie, your position would be, even if the petitions were verified, I know one of them is, but if the petitions were verified and they had experts coming up here testifying as to the impact environmentally, that still would not be our jurisdiction?
Well, when you call it impact environmentally, it's going to need to be more granular, more specific than that, and a qualified expert within your jurisdiction would have to direct their comments to that.
Bring that forward.
Yes, yes. There are times when a 22A19 petition might be a very useful tool in a planning and zoning proceeding, but these have not been fashioned to cross that threshold.
Okay.
I also want to make a few comments about a letter that was received today from Steve Trinkus, who is a professional engineer in Connecticut. Mr. Garrison will be responding to it more directly on the enumerated points that are raised in Mr. Trinkus's letter, but I want to sort of set that stage. Mr. Trinkus does not credit any significance in his letter to the fact that this is a fully developed functioning site. We're not talking about a greenfield where the excavators are coming in and creating a chaos and a lot of disturbance. We're talking about a developed site. I will also note that on page one of his letter, he says that he reviewed, I've lost his letter, he said he reviewed the Orange zoning regulations, especially relating to site plans, and he reviewed the three-page Shremshock plan package. But this application is comprised of so much more than that. There are the several PowerPoint presentations that Ms. Zamba has produced for the Commission, there's the narrative associated with the application, the application itself, all of the analyses about the special permit criteria and your regulations. So it's a very selective piece of communication that he has provided to the Commission, and many of the assertions that he makes are untrue. He says there are no soil erosion and sediment controls. Not true, they are shown on the site plan. There is no emergency access mobility shown, not true. Shown on Lindy Street, and Commissioner Turente, shown now on the Boston Post Road. There was some inference that you intended, and you will hear this again, I apologize anticipatorily for the redundancy, but it is not intended that emergency vehicles come through the Hitchcock Plaza, they have entry from the Boston Post Road.
Did you widen that?
Is that right, Ms. Shansky? That's simply not true.
Well, I'll let the traffic people speak to it, but
You can't make that turning radius.
Well, I'll let Mr. DeAndrea speak to it.
What turning radius, from Post Road into the
Emergency vehicle onto the site.
From the Post Road?
It would ordinarily be from the Post Road, but they can't make it from there, so they're coming through Hitchcock Plaza and up Lindy to make a left into the site.
I will defer to Mr. DeAndrea, if we may. So, most importantly, Mr. Trinkus has four conclusions in his letter, and the last one is that the application is incomplete, which it is not. He, I must find it, I beg your pardon, one second.
It's December 5th.
Yes, I'm sorry, I just shuffled mine, so
You want a copy of the?
May I borrow it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so the fourth one, incomplete, not true. The submitted plans are totally acceptable, they are derived, yes, from the GIS, but the ASBILT survey from the bank is included in your plan package as well, and you can see that the site is as the site is. And
Excuse me, Ms. Shansky, maybe this is a good time to point out that I took the PDF that was transmitted to us yesterday and scaled it
Yes.
And went to the site this morning, and that site plan is off by over a foot.
Well, if you could tell that to Mr. DiStefano from Bowler. The ASBILT was off by a foot?
The map we were given.
We haven't been given anything after that.
We received it yesterday.
We have the ASBILT with us this evening. In fact, it's in your package that you've been handed already.
You need a magnifying glass to read it, though.
Yeah.
Well, we can retire that issue for you. No wetland permit is required, and his conclusion number one, it is apparent to this office that this use will generate significantly more vehicle trips, is no more substantive or unspeculative a determination than has been made by the neighbors. There's been no review of the traffic reporting, there's been, and then he equates that with non-point source pollution, which, as I've said, is also going to be treated from the 931 square feet of disturbance. So with that, I'm going to pass the podium on to Ms. Zamba, unless there are any other questions.
I'm not going to keep my cut.
Oh, I'm, no, see? You know what? I am untrustworthy that way. Let's make sure this is you. I beg your pardon, and thank you for the use of the paper. Ms. Zamba, any other questions, Commission?
Not at the moment, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Anne Marie Zamba on behalf of Green Thumb Industries. When I last stood before you on October 18th, we walked through a comprehensive presentation of the cannabis-specific special use criteria. We also heard and will continue to hear from the public comments of speculation and judgment about the sale and use of cannabis. These statements were made from fear and not fact. My goal tonight is a continued demonstration that Southern CT Wellness and Healing, as an experienced operator, adheres to this special use criteria. Because as I stand before you today, cannabis establishments and the retail sale of cannabis is a permitted use in the Orange C1 zoning district by special permit. I am seeking to address the commission's questions left open on the evening of October 18th, as well as speak to our team's efforts to hear the public comments and the work we have done to address those points. The local neighborhood residents have raised concerns over the proposed site development impacting the Trout Brook, which runs to the northeast of the property. The proposed site redevelopment is minimal, as Marjorie has stated, consisting of the removal of two of the three existing drive-through lanes and the drive-through roof canopy resulting in eight additional parking spaces. Jack, our Wetland Enforcement Officer, as previously stated in the record, determined the scope of work to be of no impact to the adjacent wetland area. The township engineer, Mr. Bob Brinton, signed off on the proposed work as the Water Pollution Control Authority and Flood Zone Review. We are discussing the removal of impervious roof surface to be replaced with another impervious surface of asphalt, a negligible or zero increase as a result. A soil erosion and sediment control plan and construction waste management plan, as required by the town, would be furnished and modified to meet with the town's specifications if our special permit were to be approved. There is no impact to the neighboring well water. Fortunately, we found the ASBILT survey for the construction of the original Commerce Bank that previously occupied the current building. The storm scepter STC 900 was installed for stormwater management. Luke DiStefano of Bowler will provide testimony this evening that the installed stormwater system meets the current standards and would still be installed today. While we cannot speak to the maintenance of the system, we would be amenable to a condition of approval that required the inspection and any necessary maintenance and repair of the system to be performed with a certifying letter of the work done provided to the township engineer. Commissioner Cornell, you raised concerns that the site has pooling on it. I reviewed our due diligence photos, which were taken either during the rain or post-rain. It's very wet in the photos. And I visited the site today. I did not see the pooling that you indicated.
So my comment went to, in the absence of any engineering testimony, which apparently we're going to get tonight, that we had no way of knowing if the existing site was operating to the standards which would apply. You are now, at this point, providing evidence that it will meet stormwater runoff requirements that would be required of the buildings. And you're going to give testimony to that?
Correct.
As I said, because we had none of this information, I said, you know, we don't even know about the pooling. But it wasn't the pooling per se.
Understood. I had also spoken with Mr. Brinton on that. He indicated that there was a complaint from the subject property. You know, there was an issue. It's now addressed. We've also submitted, to address lighting concerns regarding the back of the site not being well illuminated, an updated lighting supplement and photometric plan. The plan and zoning office was able to drum up the Commerce Bank photometric plan. Review of that, along with Google Street View images and all building department records for the property, tell us that the parking lot pole lights had been retrofitted to LEDs sometime between 2018 and 2015, unpermitted. Bowler Engineering has performed the site update work for all TD banks in the northeast and was able to provide the specs for the lights installed as they are part of the standard lighting package for TD. We also considered the lighting under the current drive-through canopy and sought to offset the decrease in lighting from the proposed canopy removal by adding building-mounted lights to the exterior and back, exterior back and exterior sides of the building. The site is, at present, overly illuminated and has been since the lighting was replaced unpermitted. To meet with foot handle requirements, we are proposing shields we added to all the pole-mounted lights. Replacement of the recessed front entrance lights is also captured in the photometric plan. All lighting will remain dark sky compliant. Based upon concerns, commissioner inquiry, resident concerns, a revised site plan is before you this evening. While we hear the neighborhood's concern over customers making a right turn up Lindy, we know these concerns to be unfounded. This was not an issue with the previous bank development and will not be an issue with the cannabis use either. To address this concern, we are proposing left-turn-only signs be prominently posted at both exiting Lindy Street driveways. We are also proposing the addition of lot striping that will show and encourage the driver into a left-turn-only movement. We considered flexible delineators or flexible bollards within the left-turn-only striped area, but were strongly cautioned against this installation as they're highly seasonal and they are often impacted by snow and plows. The updated site plan does show a loading space and emergency vehicle access routes. Commissioner Turenti, I understand that this is a contested issue here. I have brought the site plan application bearing the fire marshal's wet signature for your review if desired. The fire marshal did attend our site plan pre-application meeting remotely on August 29th. And I was afforded the opportunity to sit with him on September 7th, review the plan and obtain his sign-off.
I understood that from the last meeting. And I asked Jack that question. He replied affirmatively. So I'm not sure why you're hung up on the emergency access vehicle.
Just trying to address items left open. The commission asked us to evaluate the site functionality with both drives to Lindy Street closed off and all traffic routing through the Post Road entrance. Mr. DeAndrea and I looked at the question from both a traffic and site circulation standpoint. It remains the case that the Lindy drives off the Post Road, excuse me, the Lindy drives are critical to accommodate the drive-through exiting movements. We also examined the possibility of closing the Lindy Street Drive closest to the residence and routing all movements entirely out of the Lindy Street Drive closest to the Post Road. This option will create a circular logjam and may put us out of impervious surface compliance by creating that driveline. Importantly, it also remains the case that Mr. DeAndrea's report, as confirmed via WSP's peer review, establishes the safety and feasibility of the proposal as it is currently designed. WSP's memorandum dated November 18th, page 6, paragraph number 4, provides, "WSP recommends retaining the existing configuration in which traffic exiting the site to Boston Post Road northbound continues to utilize Lindy Street."
Yep, but WSP is here tonight because in speaking with them previously, they said that that comment means that they believe that you need access for left-hand turn movements at the Boston Post Road, not that you need the existing configuration of two entrances on Lindy Street. But since he's here, we will deal with that as their testimony.
Sure.
Please.
Nuisance conditions. Many of the communities we discuss a cannabis use with are concerned with issues of nuisance. Slide 5 shows the language of the special use nuisance criteria. I think it's highly imperative to reference the correspondences from Chief Gagny. Chief Gagny, at the commission's request, provided a letter dated October 26th that evaluates the traffic and safety on site. The chief took it upon himself to contact the chiefs of police in Milford, Branford and Westport, where we have an extended track record of operational history. The chief provides that in his conversation with the other municipal chiefs, it revealed that there have been no issues in any of the mentioned municipalities because of our presence.
And he further went on to point out that none of those facilities were hybrid.
Correct. But he did contact Northampton, which is my next point, in Massachusetts, as they have had adult use for four years. And in his conversation with the Northampton chief, provided as detailed in his November 1 supplemental letter, that chief indicated that there have been no issues with any of the establishments and no negative impact on the community to date. Again, of note, they don't have one establishment. They have 12 cannabis businesses.
Those letters aren't part of the record yet. I did intend to read them into the record at some point tonight.
Sorry, I'm ahead of you.
Do you have any information with regard to the Northampton, Mass. site? What it was like when it first opened for the first three months?
I don't. Frankly, I was not in the industry at that time. I don't know, I don't believe that's detailed in the chief's letter.
Right. It's not there. I was just curious, because I heard they were backing up on 95.
Sure. So Massachusetts did just recently pass a cannabis reform act. It's Bill 3096 to provide some additional equity to the cannabis industry. The act eliminates the ability for local municipalities to charge operators with community impact fees without proof of those costs incurred. The cannabis reform analogizes, in Massachusetts, excuse me, analogizes adult-use cannabis dispensaries to that of any other retail use. So the Connecticut legislature, my guess is that they learned from that. And they are ahead of the curve, in my opinion, and from all the statutes that we've seen in this industry. When a state launches adult use, we've acknowledged that there is an uptick in volume at dispensaries. And Senate Bill 1201 recognizes that this is present for roughly four weeks. Our experience confirms this. Section 83 of SP 1201 provides that for up to 30 days, so those four weeks, after opening of a hybrid retailer, a municipality may charge for any necessary and reasonable costs incurred by the municipality for the provision of public safety services, inclusive of costs to direct traffic, up to $50,000. That fee, coupled with a short-term parking lease that we have negotiated with Hitchcock Plaza, would allow us to handle any volume that we have for those first four weeks before we reach that state of equilibrium. Disturbances of the peace, open public consumption of cannabis, pedestrian or vehicle queuing resulting in obstruction, littering, loitering, illegal parking, louder sustained noises, disturbing lighting and citations for traffic will not occur. They're not occurring in Branford, Milford or Westport. Our knowledge and experience in this space helps prevent. Go ahead.
My question would go to the length of time for the site to achieve what I would call steady state of your customers are your customers, your dry hairs, your dry area and your routines, your routine. If, because you are going in hybrid and there are few people so situated in the industry right now, there's going to be a time lag before the state of Connecticut gets its act together and there are pure recreational uses and the market gets saturated by multiple sites. So the question I have, or the question I struggle with is that for a certain period of time, if you get approved, that, and I don't know that it's four weeks, it's going to take a while for your traffic to settle out because people aren't going to have anywhere else to go for recreational unless they go to, you know, until other people open up.
I implore you to look at slide 6.
Okay, slide 6.
So that provides a table of all of the hybrid dispensaries that have been approved by the DCP as of November 22nd. I checked this morning and there have not been any additional approved. Here you're going to see Branford, New Haven, Torrenton, Newington and Meriden. They have all been approved for a hybrid retailer. Those locations are all under an hour drive from Orange. I would also go on to say that we are going to miss the launch of adult use. The launch of adult use is anticipated for mid to late January. Should the commission see fit to approve this this evening, we would not even have a building permit at that point. So with a 12-week construction term, we will be a late entrant to the adult use market in Connecticut. Many questions were raised and assertions made surrounding the demographics of our current patients and where they come from. While we are limited in our ability to collect data due to HIPAA, we do collect ZIP code data to understand the communities that we serve. The data analyzed all of the transactions year-to-date at our Milford facility. We compiled a list of municipalities that represented 10 or more transactions. 27 municipalities fit that bill. Top 10 are Milford, Bridgeport, Stratford, West Haven, Shelton, Trumbull, New Haven, Ansonia, Fairfield and Monroe. Orange was number 12, tied with Derby, closely followed by Norwalk. This data highlights that a dispensary in your community would drive ancillary businesses up along the Post Road, a goal of the town's comprehensive plan. People coming to pick up their preorder might grab dinner, fill up their gas tank, do some holiday shopping. This data also demonstrates that your direct community is served by cannabis. We find time and again that adult use launches in states permit those hesitant of becoming patients due to stigma or those prevented due to barriers to entry, such as, you know, rising doctor visit costs or the DCP registration for a medical card even, to become pseudo-patients thanks to adult use. Would the demographics of a proposed pharmacy or a package store even be raised in this form? Likely no, given both are permitted uses falling under general retail sales. For a town of 14,000 people, the town of Orange has six liquor licensed cafes, or, yes, five liquor stores, three alcohol wholesalers, 24 restaurant liquor or beer and wine licenses and seven active pharmacy licenses. We are seeking the approval for one hybrid cannabis establishment. The ordinance as written today would effectively eliminate the fear of a proliferation of these businesses with the 5,000-foot separation distance from one business to another. Should the commission see fit to approve this application, the maps on slides 8 and 9 of the presentation demonstrate the inability for another operator to locate within the C1 district. The last slide provides reference to how other municipalities have dealt with the hours of operation in their recently enacted cannabis ordinances. We believe our proposed hours are more than reasonable, fit within the hours afforded to liquor. And if the demand is not as anticipated, we will reduce accordingly. If there are not any questions, I will pass it over to Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering.
All right, just a couple.
Yeah, please.
On a percentage basis, if you know, how many are drive-throughs and how many are going to be appointments in the facility?
Sure. About 80 to 85% drive-through. And the rest would be handled, you know, 15% via walk-in business.
You mentioned a short-term lease with 185 Hitchcock.
Yes.
Without getting into the specifics of some of the terms, how many spaces are we talking about?
20 exclusive parking spaces that we have the right to sign.
20? And there's a connection between those two parking lots?
You would have to cross over Lindy Street. The proposed use of that would be for employee parking as we like to be nimble with our staff count to understand, you know, if we have more medical patients coming in, do we need an additional pharmacist? We just want to be able to be nimble and have that extra space.
And how long is the short-term parking agreement for?
Sure. It's for six months. Hitchcock drives a hard bargain.
No options to extend, at least in that document?
Not in the document that's written.
Thank you.
Does Hitchcock have any concern that cars, you know, customers of the dispensary, did they have any concern that they would use the entrance to Hitchcock to access, you know, through their parking lot across Lindy Street to access?
None that were voiced to me. I spoke with a couple of representatives over at Brooks Properties.
You clearly have a strong concern over the ability of the site to handle the cars.
I do not have that concern, rather-
Then why would you lease 20 spaces across the street?
Sure. So Tim Gorman, our VP of Retail Security and Operational Compliance, this is a best- practice in the industry. We don't know what to anticipate. We just launched in Rhode Island last week, and we are not seeing the volume that we anticipated. So we have a massive parking lot, and it has not yet been full.
You do have almost double the parking spaces that...
That are required.
...the regulation requires.
Yes.
Without the Hitchcock.
Correct. Yes.
So when you say something like, "We don't know what to anticipate," how do we have a lot of confidence in your traffic numbers?
Very fair. So we don't know what to anticipate based upon when we will come to an established market. So we're trying to figure out what demand will be taken by those dispensaries that I quoted within an hour, you know, to Commissioner Cornell's point, which social equity applicants will be able to get up and running in time. We have a volume percentage that we think will be there. We think it will be double, which is what the traffic report accounts for. We like to be prepared. Maybe we can't staff in time. We can bring in staff, and we just did this in Rhode Island, from New Jersey and Connecticut to help fill that need. Those cars have to go somewhere.
You said in your application that you'd start with, or you have 1,500 transactions in Milford now?
Correct.
1,500 transactions per week?
Per week, 215 a day.
And you think that will double when you, if you were to move to Orange?
We acknowledge...
Once the, is that just the medical cannabis?
No, that captures both.
It'll double. So 3,000, you think at best, or your hope is for 3,000 transactions per week?
Correct.
Once you're up and running?
Correct.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering. I know there's a lot of folks who want to speak tonight, and Marjorie and Anne Marie stole some of my thunder, so I'll be brief. As noted, our firm was brought on board to take a look at the plans provided specifically as it related to lighting and stormwater management, given our role in the previously designed and approved site associated with the Commerce Bank back in '05 and '06. So what we did is, we not only took an extensive look at the site plans that were presented as part of this application, but we went back and we compared that to the plans that were approved back in '05, and more specifically compared it to the as-bill plan that we understand was submitted to the municipality as part of a certificate of occupancy in 2006. And what we noted, most notably as it relates to stormwater management, is that the site, when designed in '05 and as currently operating today, has a very extensive stormwater management system currently operating on-site. That consists of catch basins, deep-some catch basins that collect all of the runoff from all of the site, all of the paved portion or impervious portions of the site. That is directed to, as previously mentioned, a stormwater quality unit that is designed to pre-treat all of the stormwater prior to it exiting the property and making its way back to the Trout Brook where it currently discharges today. We looked at the previous drainage report, and we noted that consistent with the 2004 Stormwater Manual and the 2002 DEP Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, that the plan was consistent with both. And I think it's been mentioned a couple of times that the proposed plan results in no modifications to any of the impervious cover on-site, with the exception of the fact that they're taking a small portion of canopy and replacing it with the asphalt underneath that's currently there. So there are absolutely no changes to the amount of impervious cover on the property. So you're not going to see any need for mitigation resulting from increase in impervious, and it's our assertion that the drainage design that was installed in 2005 or '06 is consistent with the regulations and doesn't need to be modified at this point. And again, I know you got a lot of folks who want to speak, so I can answer any questions as it relates to the stormwater management, or we can turn it over to Rich DeAndrea with Colliers to talk traffic.
Can you just speak to a maintenance plan that would be appropriate, knowing the stormwater system that's there now?
Sure. My understanding is that there was an operation and maintenance plan provided as part of the original design. That's fairly typical for these types of systems most municipalities require. As noted previously, the applicant is willing to implement an ongoing long-term stormwater operation and maintenance plan that's comfortable with the municipality, which typically consists of street sweeping, inspections of your deep-some catch basins, the stormwater quality unit is typically inspected, and then generally they're cleaned out on a fairly regular basis, and the system typically operates without incident going forward.
Because it has this maintenance plan.
Correct.
So when TD Bank rolled out, they, these were all prefabricated units, and they, you know, engaged, I think with your Long Island office, to do a lot of those of the site engineering. You would say that since this was put in in 2006, that since the stormwater manual hasn't changed since '04, this would meet the criteria if the site plan was done from Greenfield today?
Correct.
And if I can read with my old eyes this control point survey, it appears that after going through the stormwater management system on-site, it intercepts an RCP pipe from the Post Road, which probably vents untreated into Trout Brook. Is that, I mean, are you aware of where the water goes after it leaves the site?
Based on what we can see and what we looked at for existing plans, it discharges back into the Trout Brook.
Okay. But it's going into a system from the Post Road that runs down, well, it looks like it actually runs across your site. If this drawing's accurate, but it's hard to tell. All right. So with respect to stormwater, if during the construction sequence, a silt and sediment control system was installed for the minimal disruption, there would be no additional impact that isn't currently there now?
Correct. There's no other questions? We can turn it over to Rich with Colliers.
Good evening. Rich DeAndrea with Colliers Engineering and Design. Yeah, D apostrophe A-N-D-R-E-A. So just a little background to refamiliarize us with where we've come from and where we are now. So we had submitted an initial traffic or trip generation analysis basically for you guys to review initially. It was then supplemented by a supplemental traffic analysis that was submitted on October 4th. That was presented to you at your October meeting, and then at that point, it was requested that a peer review was done by WSP. I understand that they're here tonight to discuss that, but there, based on those comments that were received in their memorandum on November 18, and then also a follow-up email on November 22, we prepared a revised supplemental traffic analysis. And what I would like to do is just highlight some of the things that we added to that supplemental traffic analysis for your information. One of the things that we looked at was, we prepared a crash data analysis for the intersection of Lindy Street at Boston Post Road. We collected crash data for a three-year period between January 1, a three-plus-year period between January 1 and November 28. That analysis identified three accidents that had occurred during that time period. Looking at those accidents, we didn't see any significant prevailing condition that was at that location, or any safety deficiency for that intersection.
Is that, would you expect that number of accidents on a road like the Post Road?
Yeah. Three accidents.
Kind of excessive to me for that.
I would say that three accidents in almost a four-year period, actually, with the amount of volume at that location is actually probably below average.
Okay. So I would expect then to see the sort of similar results for other intersections along the Post Road?
Unsignaled intersections along the Post Road now, with similar volumes, right?
Similar volumes.
Turning onto, into and out of Lindy Street is really, the accidents that were observed were accidents turning into and out of Lindy Street.
Okay.
Okay? So the, two of them were left turns out of Lindy Street, and one of them was a left turn into Lindy Street. And the point being that other intersections along the corridor where you have conflicting movements, that at unsignaled intersections, you would see similar type accidents, probably with a similar accident rate with a similar amount of volume going into and out of Boston Post Road.
Okay.
We also provided a site distance analysis. The site distance analysis was looked at for each of the driveways to the property as well as the Lindy Street intersection. Based on that analysis, each of those locations provide sufficient site distance or exceeds the site distance that's required based on the posted speed limit along both Boston Post Road and Lindy Street. There was some suggestions about maintenance of shrubs by WSP, and I'm sure they can go into that, but I don't see any objection for that. There was a question about, we had previously noted that we had thought that up to 5 to 10% of the traffic that's coming here could be pass-by traffic or attracted from people passing the site on their way to do another errand or something, maybe stopping here at the same time. That, we based that on our experience with similar type retail uses. However, we didn't take a credit for that in our analysis. So our analysis, typically that would reduce your actual trip generation for the development, or your trips that you're attributing to the Boston Post Road. When we did our analysis, we did not take that into account. We applied the full volume that we estimated here. So our analysis is slightly conservative, but there is a possibility that we could have some pass-by, what we call pass-by trips here. WSP requested an analysis of the Lindy Street driveways, which we had not previously provided. Our thinking was that the volume on Lindy Street is fairly low, and that those volumes would operate sufficiently, or those driveways would operate sufficiently. Regardless, we did provide that analysis in this revised supplemental traffic analysis, and the analysis for those two intersections, taking into account the traffic from Hitchcock Plaza, indicates that those intersections would operate at a level of service A, so the best level of service.
So would that be figures 14 and 15 of the, of your...
Yes, sounds correct, yeah.
All right. The one is the 2023 build traffic volume, weekday peak and Saturday peak?
Yes, correct.
So if a layman, although our, you know, the other engineers also, was to look at this, there, the traffic in the, you know, this is saying, for example, on Saturday, that there's going to be a total of 70 vehicles trying to process out right and left out of Lindy Street in a peak hour at the Boston Post Road.
Yeah.
And then if you go back to the first site entrance existing into the proposed site, of that, you have 12 cars coming out of the front of the building and 30 cars coming out of the back. Okay. And those, and somewhere in here, there is a discussion and/or an analysis of if those 70 people are trying to exit through the projected gaps in the 1,200 cars traveling each way on the Boston Post Road, how many cars might stack up at the Lindy Street-Post Road intersection?
Yes. So that was actually something that I was going to get to, but...
Sorry.
No, no problem. We can touch on it now. So if you were to look at, forgive me one second. Table number three on page nine of the report, in that we provided the queue length, the queuing, based on the queuing analysis results for each of the intersections that we identified. We provided that under existing no-build and build conditions. When you, I'll give you a minute if you want to.
Thanks.
Page nine, table number three. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So the, that's, that table summarizes the Saturday analysis results that you were discussing. So when we looked at the queuing results for the Lindy Street intersection under the build condition, we identified a queue length of 38 feet, which is a little bit, a little bit more than, it's basically one and a half vehicles based on what we assume for vehicle length. So that's an average queue that would be experienced over the course of the peak hour.
That's completely unrealistic.
Okay? I mean, that's...
So far off the mark, it's not even funny, Rich.
That's the analysis results that were also reviewed by WSP and confirmed, so I stand by the results that are in that table. But again, there are times that you may experience a three-car queue, but over the course of the hour that that analysis is done, a car may come to that intersection and spend five seconds there and be able to get out of that intersection right away. So that queue is, their queuing time is factored into that analysis. So you have an average queue for the hour. I understand there may be times where you have longer queues, but it's not there every second of that hour.
Rich, I've driven in there probably a couple dozen times over the last couple of months, on a weekday midday, and took a left out of Lindy Street. I'm there for a good eight to 10 seconds.
And that may be the case, but that, when you factor that into the queue and the delays that we're talking about, that actually, your eight to 10 seconds actually probably brings that queue length and the delay that we're talking about down. And I can actually, we have video of the counts that we conducted there, where we actually looked at what the queues are today, and it's very representative is of what's in these tables.
What page is that, the table on again?
Page nine, table number three.
And this is which we...
This is the November 29 revised supplemental traffic analysis.
Page nine?
I think I went a little far.
Yeah. Just want to make sure I heard it correctly. You said the level of service at the intersection of Lindy and the Post Road is A?
No. I said the level of service for the Lindy Street driveways...
All right.
...from the project are level of service A.
Thank you. I'm glad I quite...
Yeah. The analysis shows a level of service D for the intersection itself at Boston Post Road.
Lindy Street and Boston Post Road is...
Level of service D, yes.
It's D with the build conditions?
Correct.
And without the build conditions?
It's currently level of service C. That's, the level of service C and D are very typical for an unsignaled intersection along this type of corridor. And then I think one of the comments that was brought up by the public was about possible signalization of this intersection. Based on the volumes that we see here, it doesn't currently meet the warrants for a traffic signal. I haven't fully done that analysis, but I, based on my experience, I can tell you that those volumes are not high enough exiting Lindy Street to warrant a traffic signal. All right. Couple other things just to touch on, kind of continuing on the queuing analysis part of this, and this goes to the operation of Lindy Street. One of the things we were asked to look at was the queues that are currently experienced from the traffic signal at the Hitchcock Plaza, well, intersection. from the traffic signal at the Hitchcock Plaza, well, intersection, queuing back to the Lindy Street intersection. So we reviewed the, the video evidence that we have for the intersection of Lindy Street and Boston Post Road, which, in which you can see the queues at that, from the Hitchcock Plaza traffic signal. And based on what we observed, the queues back through, do back through that intersection occasionally when the light turns red at Hitchcock Plaza. There's only about 250 feet, I believe, between the two intersections. But we only show that happening about 30% of the time during that peak hour period that we looked at.
So what was the duration of the period you looked at?
We looked at an hour period in the PM and an hour period on Saturday, the peak hours that we identified for the actual highest traffic volumes. And based on what we saw, you can see the queues that do extend through the Lindy Street intersection, but that only occurs about 30% of the cycles, or every time it turns red at Hitchcock Plaza.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent of those times, you'll see a queue that backs through this intersection. Okay, so based on that, we conclude that there are sufficient gaps in that traffic stream to allow people to safely exit from that Lindy Street intersection.
Assuming they're making a right-hand turn.
Well, obviously, if you're making a left, you have to contend with the traffic in both directions, but yes.
If, as you testify, that you're going to see an average queue length of 1.4 cars at Lindy Street between the cars, both waiting longer to turn left and less time to turn right, can you explain why you think that you require two access points out onto Lindy Street, both in the front and the back of the building, when the general site plan requirements in the town allow one access point onto a street from a commercial enterprise unless it's, you know, exceed, exceedingly large?
Well, I would, I would say that, you know, part of having those driveways is a onsite circulation item. To be able to have the drive-through function, we obviously would need a driveway to Lindy Street. Otherwise, the, you would have, if you didn't have that driveway to Lindy Street, you would have a mixing of traffic entering and exiting with the drive-through in close proximity that I think would be unfavorable to the onsite circulation. The, having both driveways to Lindy Street, I think you would, having an entry from Lindy Street is desirable from just a general traffic pattern perspective. That exit, that driveway in the back is exit-only, obviously, right now, and I think that's the way it should remain based on having the drive-through come out at that location.
And I understand that it is more convenient for the site to put its traffic onto an adjoining roadway rather than handle it internally by putting a drive aisle past the building. But one person's convenience is another person's nuisance if your queue analysis turns out not to be wrong and somebody's not fighting through the five cars you could stack between the front entrance and the stop bar and what could, you know, you know, become 10 cars trying to stack up on Lindy Street between the two access points.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're indicating is, is not realistic. I mean, having a 10-car queue, you look at our analysis, we're specifically identifying what the queue is going to be, and I don't think that a 10-car queue is realistic at any time of the day.
Okay, well, then, if you're correct, then there won't be any queuing internally if you try and handle your own cars on your own property.
Well, you, but you don't have the same queuing, you don't have the same ability to handle the traffic internally as you do out on Lindy Street.
Why, you just build a driveway on the Lindy Street side of the building and you make it wide enough to handle both the, the drive-through lane and the parking back there, and then they proceed out and they take a right-hand turn where you're, you know, and then they take a left out onto Lindy.
And then toward the Post Road.
And then get up to the Post Road, yeah. I think even more to the point, and I guess it's along the lines of your queuing concern, Kevin, you've got 60 trips per hour peak. Is that, did I read that table correctly?
It's about 70.
Yeah, I think it's about 70.
Okay, so 70 trips and 85% of them are drive-through. So you've got round number 60 trips. The drive-through can handle 30 per hour. I think your report said two minutes.
Your report said five to eight minutes, I think.
No, that was for walk-in.
For transaction.
Right, I'm talking about.
That was not a drive-through transaction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So drive-through transactions, you would have round number 60. You could handle 30 in an hour. Where, where do you envision, where do you envision the other 30 cars going?
So what, what we've indicated in our study is that the way the drive-through will be handled is that there will be, they will allow to be able to queue six vehicles at that drive-through.
Right, that's right.
From that point, the drive-through will be monitored, and if a queue of six vehicles is experienced, somebody will actually come out to the cars, to the drive-through, and direct any other additional pickup vehicles to park and utilize curbside pickup.
Okay.
So.
And that, that's fine.
Yeah, so, and I think.
But in an hour period, you're going to have 60 vehicles to contend with, 30 will go successfully through the drive-through. You have another 16 spaces behind the building.
Yep.
That leaves 14. Where do those other 14 cars go? Out to Lindy Street, Street into a queue?
Hold on, say that again, you have.
There are 60.
60 cars pickup.
No, 60 cars in an hour.
60 cars in an hour, and what?
30 can be handled through the drive-through in an hour if it's two, two minutes per vehicle.
Yeah.
That leaves 30 that you can't get through the drive-through.
Yeah, but they're going to either, they're going to park onsite and do their pickup, or they're going to go into the building and they're going to exit at, when they exit.
Well, why, why would they go into the building if they're there to, as a?
But not everybody, no, not, not every, you're talking about the total traffic generation, right?
No, I'm talking about.
Okay, the drive-through generation. They're going to, but they're going to park and they're going to do, use pickup, they're going to, a curbside pickup to receive their order as if they were in the drive-through, but that doesn't mean they're all arriving at the same time and they're all.
No, they're arriving in, over the course of an hour.
Correct, and that's how you spread, how, how this queue gets spread out. And I, I don't know, I'm not sure if I can explain it any differently.
Does that make sense to you guys, or am I crazy? Well, you're running math and saying you can't get there from here. It's, you know, it's, it's, you can process 30 people, you've got 60 people going there, where do the rest go?
What about if you looked at it on a, you know, from, from a transaction standpoint?
You're, I think we're confusing two different things. We're talking about what the drive-through can handle versus what can actually be accommodated at Lindy Street as far as traffic operations go.
We are to a point, Rich, but my point, my point is 30 get serviced at the drive-through.
Yeah.
Another 60, if they were going to park for curbside or whatever the heck you want to call it.
Yeah.
That gets you up to 46, you still have 14 additional vehicles. Where do they go? Do they go around the building and park in front?
No, they would park right in front. There's parking in front, there's parking in back, why, I don't.
I just said, you can accommodate 30 in the drive-through.
Yeah.
60 can, 16 can park in back.
Mm-hmm.
Another 14 can park in front if those 30 that can't be serviced walk in.
Okay.
You've got the whole site pretty much exhausted, and we haven't talked about the other 10 walking customers.
But all, all, all 79 customers that we're talking about that are coming, I'm sorry, when you look, all right, when you look at our generation, all 60 customers that we're talking about coming on a Saturday peak hour, which is our highest hour, are not there for the full hour, and they're not there all at one time, so you can.
If they're in a drive-through, where?
But not everybody's in the drive-through.
If I may.
Yeah.
Sorry, Anne Marazan of Green Thumb Industries, the 80% is representative of pre-orders online, so that can be serviced via delivery within a 10-mile radius, that can be serviced through the drive-through, that can be serviced via curbside, that pre-order, somebody can still walk into the building, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
You're good.
You can repeat that.
80% is representative of pre-orders online. That can be serviced in a lot of different ways. That can be via drive, or the drive-through, which we've established. That can be via curbside pickup. That can also be, if somebody wants to add to their order, they can walk into the dispensary even though they've placed that pre-order online. That is serviced through many different avenues. Apologies if I misstated that it was 80% directly through the drive-through, that is not necessarily the case.
And I, I, I think the, the point that I was trying to make was that the 60 people are spread over the hour. They're there at most, I think, we, a new transaction, I think, is 15 minutes is what is anticipated, right?
Right.
So that's the longest that they're going to be there. Everybody else, we think five to eight minutes on, if they're in the store, and the drive-through is obviously faster, so your, your, your turnover rate keeps, you, you have the ability on the site to accommodate everybody based on the turnover ratio, rate.
I'm a little confused on the issue, so.
Well, I mean, if summer deliveries, summer pickup, I mean, we don't even know what the number is, if that's the situation.
Well, I think, but based on the data that Green Thumb has provided, they're saying that 80 to 85% of their, of the business that will be done here will be through pre-orders. That can either be handled by drive-through, by curbside pickup, by walk-in.
Rich, I'm not using my numbers, I'm using the numbers from your report. It says two minutes per transaction, 85% drive-through. I don't have the expertise to make these.
I don't think, I don't think we said 85% drive-through, I think we said 85% pre-order. There's a distinction there.
Of, of those pre-orders, how many are through drive-through, if you know?
Yeah, so, just before we get to that, so on page 12 of our report, under drive-through operation and queuing, as previously indicated in our July 14th, 2022 letter, the proposed facility anticipates that 85% of the transactions in this location will ultimately be pre-orders, which can be picked up at the facility via the drive-through lane, curbside pickup, or in-store pickup. So it's not 85% through the drive-through.
Okay.
Okay, we did say on the next page that we think about 28 customers per hour can be handled through the drive-through. Based on the drive-through through turnover rate. So the other percentage of pre-orders will be curbside or in-store pickup. And those transactions allow for, the pre-orders allow for quicker turnover, which keeps the site from being overflowed.
Okay, so how much of the pre-orders are in-store pickup and how many are deliveries in their experience?
Deliveries or drive-throughs?
No, no. I, you're saying that the 85%, okay, if I understood it correctly, is either pre-orders, right?
They're pre-orders, yeah.
Some of those pre-orders are deliveries, meaning you're delivering to these, the houses?
I don't, is that true? Yeah, okay, so, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious as to, if you know the percentage breakdown.
I, I.
Only because I'm trying to figure out how many people are going to be on the site.
Yeah, understood, I don't, I don't, I don't know the number of, of deliveries, offhand.
Would it be helpful in trying to figure out how many people are going to be on the site to look at the anticipated transaction data, coming to 1,500 transactions per week that we were talking about before?
Yeah, I think the number.
Translates into a certain number per day, a certain number per hour.
Actually, it was between, it was between 1,500 and three grand, if I remember correctly.
Well, we expect, you expect the transactions to double once they have the hybrid license, so it would be 3,000 transactions that you're all going to do. So 3,000 in a, in a week divided by seven days is, I don't know what.
No, it's 3,000 divided by 71 hours of operation.
Yeah, what does that come to?
It's 42 cars per hour.
42 cars per hour.
For every hour they're open.
But that, but 42, 40, that, that's an average. So you may have no traffic on Monday morning at 10 o'clock.
That's right.
But you have, you know, three times 40 at Saturday, on Saturday at 1:00. So how do you handle, how do you handle the traffic?
I don't think, but, again, so this is where we go back to the, the traffic generation numbers that are presented by IT in, and that were used in the study, right? So the, the, those numbers identify a peak generation of 60 cars in, 60 cars out for 120 total cars into and out of the site, right? That is based on observations of other similar facilities. And so you may have times where you have 60 cars in an hour, and then again, like you said, other times where it's 10 cars in an hour.
No, but what I'm worried about is not 60 cars in an hour, I'm worried about 120 cars.
Yeah, but I don't, my point is I don't think that you're going to see that concentration of traffic based on what we see from the data that we have available.
But using the applicant's numbers, we will.
So we have the ability to stagger the reservations on the backend with so many orders being done on, online, excuse me, pre-orders, we can account for this. So to your point, we will have some hours that are quiet, we won't see three times 42 in an hour because if all of those reservations are being made online, we're going to account for that, and we're going to stagger and only offer hours for pickup that are not going to stress the site.
Okay, so you'll, you'll tell the people not to come at 1:00 on Saturday, you'll say come at 3:00 or come at?
You, so the backend of the pre-order online ordering system is they have to select an hour, and they're told when their order is ready for pickup and they are expected to come during that hour, it is very often followed.
And in general, only the recreational people are walk-in? Or is there a lot of pre-ordering with recreational also?
There is a lot of pre-ordering with recreational as well. The consumer habit changed during COVID, people are used to ordering online, they do DoorDash, Grubhub, what have you, it's a very similar platform and user experience.
Is there any way, once it's hybrid and recreational, to control the number that come, I get it, you can control the pre-orders, but how do you control the, the walk-ins on a Saturday?
I don't know if we can necessarily control for walk-ins on a Saturday. We do offer med-only hours to account and provide additional access for medical patients. You know, if the concern is, is Saturday volume, we can seek to try and spread that out or run promos where we would be driving traffic at slower times. We've done that as well.
And then, Rich, can you get back to, you said if they see six cars, six vehicles queuing in the drive-through, someone will come out. So can you talk about that plan a little bit?
Yeah.
Is there somebody that's dedicated to look out the window and monitor, or is it somebody that's just, they look over their shoulder, they see a problem, they go out and handle it?
I, I don't know if, if you have any more information you want to provide, but my understanding is that there's a significant security system with cameras that are monitored. I believe that through those cameras, the drive-through can be monitored, and at that point, that somebody can be notified to go out and, and direct people to parking spaces when the queue is at six vehicles.
Can you give us with a high degree of assurance, a statement to the effect that we won't ever see queuing of cars back onto the Post Road? Is it possible that, you know, there'll be? Is it possible that, you know, there'll be a queue that extends back to the post-road?
From the drive-through.
From the, from the, from the, from the entrance.
Or from anything happening on-site.
Yeah. I mean, will the site be busy enough where it's conceivable that cars will be queued on the post-road? Or for that matter, queued on Lindy Street? But more, more dangerously on the post-road?
So I think by operating the drive-through, as I just described, where it'll be monitored and limited to the six-car queue, that is the biggest, would be the biggest concern about queuing onto the, the post-road. That by limiting it to six cars, you're now providing sufficient other maneuvering space for vehicles entering and exiting parking spaces that a vehicle entering at the post-road entrance shouldn't, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be a queue on the post-road. Is it?
Rich, we're all big boys and girls. How realistic is it for that drive-through to be monitored that closely? That somebody's going to go running out there and direct cars?
I believe it's, I believe it's, it's very realistic. And I, that's, that's, I, that's how, honestly, it's not just this type of establishment that does this. I've seen Dunkin' Donuts establishments that do this, where they have somebody go out there with an order, an ordering pad, and they take orders to modify, to mitigate the queue. And then they have them go park somewhere else, and somebody brings them the food. This is not just this type of establishment that does this.
But you very rarely see a queue that extends back onto a busy road.
Interesting that you mentioned Dunkin' Donuts because I can't tell you how many times I've almost been rear-ended going in the back of Dunkin' Donuts because I can't get off the road.
I mean, you queue, there's a queue at Starbucks, right? It's a long queue, but it's on a big site and can, you know, wind around there. This is, this is really a very tight.
How many cars, how many cars would it take to get onto the post-road if you're in a queue? Eight?
About seven or eight.
Seven or eight?
I would say, yeah, I would say eight.
So it doesn't sound like it can give me the assurance that I was looking for.
I'm not, look, based, I, I think the, the drive-through, the way it's going to be operated by monitoring it will mitigate a concern of queuing onto the post-road. Am I going to say it's impossible that somebody's backing out of a space and somebody has to wait for 20 seconds while somebody's backing out while they're also entering from the post-road, and there may be an additional car coming in? Is that impossible? No.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a queue, you know, a lineup of cars.
I, I, from.
From the post-road.
From, from the drive-through, it's, it's not going to happen.
What about just traffic on-site?
Well, that's, that's what I was saying. If somebody, if somebody was backing out of the closest space to that, that entrance, and somebody had to wait because of that, that, is it possible? Yeah, it's theoretically possible, but it won't be for a long duration.
But again, at, at 3,000 transactions per week, you know, on, on, at midday on Saturday, you're going to have, what, what did I say before, 60, 70 cars potentially on the site, right?
Well, they're never going to have 60 cars on the site. It's just not realistic.
That's what I'm worried about.
The drive-through is.
I hope they aren't at 36, because we only have 35 spaces.
The drive-through transactions are also.
Well, and the ones that'll wind up at the.
The drive-through.
The drive-through transactions are also timed so that you're, they're scheduled?
They're, everything, yeah. All the pre-orders are given, as Anne-Marie just said, they're, there's a, they're given a time to come pick up. And that can be managed to spread out the, the flow of traffic across the day.
Just one more piece because you've studied the internal traffic circulation of the proposed site plan. You're currently proposing 20 feet of pavement on the, and I'm, the not, you know, in order to get from the front to the back, I don't know which, I guess that's the north side. Let's call that the north side of the building. There's a 20-foot one-way drive aisle. Is 20 feet in your mind wide enough for both a queued vehicle and another vehicle to bypass it safely on the right-hand side?
Yeah, and for, yes.
That's all I, I just, so 20, a 20-foot one-way aisle is capable of supporting, in your professional opinion, both a queue and a bypass lane?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
To your point, Kevin, by the time you get to a point where you can make that turn and get around the vehicle, you're up to a point where you probably have a five-car queue. And you can only queue four alongside the building. I think it was about 70 or 80 feet long.
Right, that's what gives him the, the seven before you're intruding into the front parking area.
Yep, yep.
Right? Okay.
Would it make sense, and I know I don't mean to interrupt the applicant's presentation, to talk to WSP?
I think so.
Since we're in deal with traffic.
Is that all right with you, Marjorie? Do you have any, any further questions for Rich or?
Stay close.
Okay.
Don't leave the building.
Don't leave the building.
Yeah, come on.
Just introduce yourself.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm Kevin McCarthy from WSP, and we conducted a peer review on the Colliers Traffic Study and submitted comments to them, which they revised the study based on.
What, how would you respond to the questions we've been raising about the potential queuing?
Well, can we, why don't we take them one at a time, if you don't mind? So to, to set the table, your last communication from Bahid and yourself was the December 2 memo where Colliers did a report, you did a peer review, Colliers responded to the peer review. There was some back and forth, and this is, that's sort of the, your endpoint. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes.
So if we're going to go through this, and, you know, just so that we're all playing with the same football here, you, WSP agrees that Colliers utilized the correct trip generation data to prepare the report.
Correct. They use the IT manual, which is generally the standard that we use for traffic impact studies.
Okay, so then that data gets run through whatever the current Synchro Mesh analysis is, and that generates the tabulated data that the conclusions are drawn from, correct?
Yes, the intersection analysis in Synchro, yes.
All right. And so if I look at your initial memorandum, their response, yours, where you have stated at the end, the applicant has provided correct information and adequately addressed this comment, that means that you're both fine, that that issue, that's no longer an outstanding issue in your mind?
Yes, we, we're saying that they adequately addressed our comments. Something may still be an issue, like, for instance, the queuing internally, we don't really know. Like, we just have to base it off of the information we're given. For the trip generation and the intersection analysis, those are all based on standard procedures. So we can verify that and verify their methodologies and data.
Okay, so when you, when you, right. Hang on, I'm sorry, there's a lot of paper to go. Basically, now I can't, I'm going to have to paraphrase. You, you, when your report says that the applicant should retain the ability to access Lindy Street, that is to provide access for left-hand turn movement safely onto the post-road. You're specifically addressing the ability to access the post-road, not the number or quantity of the access points onto Lindy Street.
Correct. There's, left turns are, I think we were, we were addressing the left turns are prohibited out of the driveway currently. And we would recommend retaining that based on the adjacent intersection. So in order to accommodate left turns, you would need to access Lindy Street. But we did, we weren't evaluating the.
In, okay, so I had spoken with Bahid previously and shared with him a sketch idea that recognizing that, that safety and the existing STC permit made it reasonable for the applicant to access Lindy Street in order to process their left-hand turns. What, you know, do they need, in your opinion, two access points onto Lindy Street? And his response at that, you know, and I, I sent him a sketch, and he said, you know, that would have to, that would be their internal issue, not a traffic concern.
Correct. From a traffic standpoint, on the external network, I don't, I don't think there's a need for it. But that's all based on their internal.
Okay. I'm just trying to get your, your comments going. But based on engineering data, rather than our personal experiences, common sense, and/or concerns, you wound up agreeing that the analysis that the average queue length at Lindy Street for the combined left and right-hand turns was, was 1.4 cars?
Based on the Synchro results that were, where the data was entered accurately, yes. I would note that the analysis is based off of a two-stage left turn into the center, center turn lane, which is out there. So that was an appropriate condition. But in order to get those queues, it has to be modeled as a two-stage left turn.
What's a two-stage left turn?
Like, you turn into the center turn lane.
Oh, okay. Then you.
Locally known as a suicide lane? Or maybe that's a Jersey thing.
Somebody else is there.
Yep. I apologize for not knowing the data on the document, Kevin. I got a little beaten down with paper myself. But, but one of your responses states that the applicant should collect traffic count data at an existing facility to confirm that his numbers are appropriate. Paraphrasing. During, during weekday PM and Saturday peak periods, where does that stand?
We, I, we tend to request information the applicant may have just to verify trip generation numbers. Because, like, the, the IT is a pretty comprehensive manual. It's based off of studies, but you don't know exactly what they're based off of. It's based off of square footage of the, the facility, and it's based off of facilities around the country over a number of years. So if the applicant has anything that, any information that helps, like, back up the, the information, we, we tend to request it just for our own comfort level with the trip generation numbers. If they.
You haven't received anything, though.
We haven't received anything in addition, in addition to what was in the report, I don't believe.
So, so basically, it's a, if you happen, it's, it's a request, if you happen to have additional data that's not contained in this report, send it to us?
Yes. I think that's accurate, yes. Just to boost the, the claim to.
Well, theoretically, this is data that they know because they operate a facility like this. So rather than having to use.
In Connecticut, for instance, or in a similar location, just to, and you could, like, yes, yes, is the answer.
And then just to get back to one of Kevin's points, in your analysis, with regard to the traffic flow on the roads, that's a second egress on Lindy Street is not needed for.
Well, like, in, so those two intersections onto the, onto Lindy Street from the site, I believe it's like 12, and I don't remember the other number, and they were a level of service eight each. If you combine those numbers, it would still be an acceptable level of service. That's all I could really say about that. I don't know how it would affect the internal circulation or anything.
Okay, so they're As now. If it went down to one, it would still be an A?
I would imagine. I, they didn't do that, but like, it's, I'm pretty sure it would be acceptable.
But it might compromise the flow of traffic on the site?
Correct, yep.
Can you comment on the possibility of a queue that extends back to the post-road?
I mean, I would say it's important that it doesn't, which is obvious, I guess. But I couldn't really say. The information they provided made sense to us when we reviewed it. But I, I can't comment on how they operate their sites. And there's no sort of standard engineering analysis on that.
Any further questions? At this point? What's that?
Don't leave town.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marjorie Shansky, for the applicant. Commissioner Cornell, could you, because I had difficulty hearing from where I was sitting, could you say something more about a sketch that you made and with whom you shared it? And was that in connection with these proceedings?
It was in connection with these proceedings, and I shared it with Jack, who sent it to your client. Because, I mean, spent a lot of time on the other side of the podium. I thought in the interest of fairness, if I was going to be making, you know, comments, questions, or suggestions, people should be prepared to answer.
Thank you.
Basically, I am exploring that, and obviously we'll get into, you know, the analysis of the specific standards that have to be met, you know, as we get further along. But that the traffic that's generated on a commercial site, you know, when it accesses onto a commercial road, that's what they're made for. When they access onto. When they access onto a residential street, even our general site plan requirements suggest, and in fact state, that there should be no more than one access point onto a residential street, unless it's an exceptionally large development, which this is not. And after distilling down all of the various, you know, input data that's so far been presented, I keep coming back to a concern that Lindy Street is a very special, unique place in the town of Orange in that it's one of only two cul-de-sac streets that can only be accessed from the post road. That means that any impact that the commercial development on the post road puts on Lindy Street is absorbed by the neighborhood. So if the traffic that is generated from the commercial establishments queues up multiple cars at that intersection, that's something that the residents have to fight through every day to get out. At some point, that just gets oppressive. And although it seems from all of the testimony that one entrance is necessary because you need the traffic to safely access their left-hand turns out onto the post road, the, the linear distance between that, the first access point into the front parking lot, to the stop bar, would give you the ability to stack five cars there. If I had to fight through five cars, I'd be unhappy, but maybe it wouldn't happen all the time. But if everybody's wrong, and the back entrance is open, you can stack up 10 cars there. And that, and that just seems untenable to me personally. So anyway, going back to your question, because I also believe that there's a general obligation of a commercial use to handle their own traffic generation as much as possible. And if, for safety, we needed the front entrance, but the rear ones, just for convenience, and the applicant could put, by their own testimony, a 20-foot drive aisle along the south side of the building, close off the rear entrance, now we know, not we think, that the queue's never going to be more than five cars. But, you know, that's, so anyway, I shared that with your client. I shared it with our traffic engineer. Because if it wasn't safe to do that, I wasn't going to suggest it. And, you know, it, and because initially, my leaning was, you know, don't have any access there. But safety and the STC permits say otherwise. So, anyway, sorry, that was a long explanation.
I appreciate the long explanation. I have one more question.
Yes.
And I don't know if you were on the commission at that time. Given what you've said about the regulations...
No, I wasn't on the commission when the original site plan was approved.
That created a double...
Right. But I happen to believe, and you're the attorney, so you could tell me, but just because something was wrong in the past doesn't mean I have to continue it.
I am not going to leap to that conclusion, but what I am going to do is wonder aloud how, given what you've said about the regulations, we find ourselves with an existing site that operates that way. But it's worth pondering. Thank you. Thank you for the information.
If you want a site to the regulation, it's 331173H.
Thank you very much. To my team, I will say, next. Is that Mr. Garrison? Or if there are any questions for Mr. Gorman?
Are we looking for the individual on the intercom?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. I just wanted to make sure that I heard it correctly, heard and sensed it correctly that I was speaking.
Thank you.
Before we went too far, I did want to point out one thing.
Hang on. If you could just introduce your name for the record, please.
Yep, sure. My name is Jim Garrison, CM Plan Manager with Schrumpf Shark Architects. And I'm also, as it relates to some of these discussions, a four-year area commissioner with the seat of Columbus, Ohio, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did, I did just want to point something out relative to Commissioner Cornell's statement about the access. And I did just want to clarify that, you know, when we went into the idea of the layout of this, of this site, because the use of the bank and the use of the cannabis dispensaries shares a lot of the same traffic and parking and timeframe of customer interaction, our, our idea was largely to not really change too much of the function of traffic on the site. And that would be that there is one point of access from Lindy Street into the site, which was close to Boston Post Road, and then another point of access off of Boston Post Road into the site. And the rear location on Lindy Street is an exit-only. That is existing, and that wouldn't change. I do want to also just elaborate on some of the counts that we were talking about relative to the drive-through. And based upon my estimation of the physical characteristics of the vehicle and the amount of space available in terms of queuing, it seems as though the drive to go all the way back and back up on Boston Post Road would be about each 10 vehicles. And then the front parking lot could accommodate another four to six if cars were to come off, enough of Lindy Street. Separate from that, I just basically wanted to offer that information because I know that it's been kind of going back and forth a little bit. I am not necessarily a traffic engineer, so, you know, I just wanted to kind of give some basic information. I just want to speak briefly on the, the letter that was sent by Mr. Trinkhaus as commissioned by one of the residents, Mr. Panza, at 357 Lindy Street. There are a lot of things, and I know that everyone's time is valuable, and I don't want to keep you. But it seems as though it touched on four subjects. One was validity, accuracy, and completeness of our materials, light pollution, and stormwater runoff pollution and corrosion, and then zoning concerns, you know, in terms of providing elements on the, the site plan. I think that Mr. DeSefoix with Boller Engineering has accommodated a lot of everything. And in fact, everyone has done a great job speaking. I'm not sure that I can offer a tremendous amount of information. But as far as the site plan that we had, I think there's a question of validity and everything else. I think that one of the things that wasn't really grasped necessarily was that, you know, we're proposing, the, the site plan is more of a, a, a kind of showing the scope of work. You know, we're relying largely upon the fact that the, the paving areas, the impermeable areas are not changing, are not proposing to be changed. The building footprint itself is not changing at all. The overhang that was the, the drive-through area is being removed, and just the asphalt underneath would be taking its place. And that change is zero on the, on the impermeable surface. So really, we rely on the, the survey that is on file with the, I think, Control Points Survey. That would be the official thing of record of showing elements on the site. And they do a much better job, and that's what surveyors are for. The, the work that we have is, is kind of just showing some of the elements. The, the fact that we didn't reference a survey is specifically because of the fact that we had no contract with that firm. So we did not want to take any credit for their work. We think that it can stand on its own. We did take information from the public GIS and transfer some of that information. We had people on site taking measurements of the parking lot and the building and everything else. So the measure that you do see there, there noted plus or minus. I think that it may be a little misleading that we're going down to a fraction of an inch and also calling it plus or minus. The tolerance is probably plus or minus a few feet. But again, you know, we're talking about relativity, not necessarily, you know, actual building elements that are changing because everything's existing to remain. Relative to the light pollution concern, I know that Boller Engineering spoke about the changes proposed. I don't know that I need to offer anything different. I think, you know, in terms of efficiency of time. The stormwater runoff, runoff pollution, erosion, again, I think that it's been addressed by others pretty well. We're not really proposing any net changes. We're relying upon the fact that the system was designed and the system was functioning. I think that obviously there's a concern about maintenance during the, the several years where the building has been vacant. But obviously, I'm hopeful that things will be picked back up when GTI is there. The zoning concerns, you know, some of the elements that were missing. And again, you know, I, I appreciate Mr. Trinkhaus's list because, you know, it, it gives us a chance to see some of the concerns. And I think that it's valid for the, the residents to do the due diligence and engage with professionals like this to, you know, get these, these things out there. As I think maybe someone had said in previous meetings, you know, and like my commission worked myself, obviously, we always wished that these were at the first meeting, you know, where, you know, with all this stuff at that point. But I'm glad that there's a list here. And so I think one of the things that was brought up was loading zone. There were one of the spots in the back that we had sized where we removed the canopy in the drive lanes. We sized that relative to the, the loading space. So if you see that big hatched area, that just seems like it's a, you know, vacant walkway or something, that was just residual space based upon the fact that we were going to have a loading space at the very end out towards Lindy Street, which was the closest point between the back entry door and the, and the space. As far as sightlines go, there were no proposed changes to any of the, you know, ingress and egress and other things. So the assumption is that what was there before is suitable is carried forward. The remitancy vehicle exits. You know, I, I heard some concerns about that. And while we have added maneuvering spaces on this plan, you know, a lot of that doesn't necessarily take the place of real experience or, you know, jurisdictional input. So, you know, again, the assumption is that if it was suitable before, it's going to be suitable carrying forward. But obviously, when we talk about points of egress, points of ingress to the site, curb cuts, right turns only, left turns only, all these different things, you know, I think the biggest thing is that we're, we're, we're interested in it being a partnership and, you know, an ongoing conversation. So if there are areas of improvement, if the right turn only onto Boston Post Road would be restrictive in the eyes of the jurisdiction or the commission, then perhaps that, that could be reinvestigated. I think that originally, we had no left turn, we did not have a left turn only indicator out onto Lindy Street. And feedback from the community and where the commission had pushed us forward to add that as well. So I think that, you know, I don't want to say everything is 100% worked out. My hope is that it is. But obviously, these are things that come into play. And, you know, my experience with this client has been very positive. I know that, I, I work with several other cannabis retailers, those that do recreational and medicinal in Ohio, in California, Las, Las Vegas, the state of Nevada, all over the place. And, you know, I, I don't, for the most part, see a, an issue with, with traffic on their sites or their design. Because what I've found is that when there are problems that arise on their site in terms of functionality, operations, and, you know, impact on the community, that, that kind of comes back to them negatively. So the fact that they're making this choice and feel as though, you know, they're doing their due diligence and traffic studying and the analysis, you know, they feel that it would work. And if it ends up not working, it's, you know, could be problematic to residents on Lindy Street or in the community. But I think it would be more so detrimental to them because they are now having a poorly functioning business. You know, just in terms of my experience with, relationship with them. One more thing that I almost forgot to mention was we, we had talked about the number of cars coming, the turnover rates, and, and other things like that. I did want to offer that from our, our permit drawings and when we did analysis on square footage of the interior space, the total occupant load of the building is 48. And that says, that would be 35 people on the sales area. So to put that into perspective, when we talk about parking and we have maybe 34, 35 spots on the site, we would have, in my estimation, just based upon the occupant load, an allowance of only maximum 35 customers at one point in, in the building allowed. So obviously, you know, you can take your own takeaway from that. But I do want to offer that little extra piece of it. I have the ability to answer questions if there are any. I'm hoping that my words have been a little bit helpful.
I'm just having trouble finding the loading dock on the plans. I asked Kevin, he pointed to one thing. I asked Jack, he pointed to another. So could somebody on the team show me on the plan? And is it attached to the building?
No, loading space is not attached to the...
It is not attached to the building. And it would be where the drive-through canopy previously was located. There is a collection of spots that go from the bottom of the plan to the top of the plan. There's a total of nine spots. The one all the way towards Lindy Street would be a dedicated loading space. So I, I think, if I remember correctly, and based on Mr. Trinkhaus's pointing out the zoning requirements for a loading space, it was not delineated previously, but it would be, I think, a 12-foot by 30-foot-long space dedicated for vehicles, for a vehicle to, to park to. I'm hoping Anne Marie might be able to...
Yep, we just got new drawings that, that show it. And so from a practical standpoint, a delivery comes, they park there, and then they walk it to the front of the building?
No.
No. How did, how did the deliveries come?
My understanding, based upon my conversation with them in operations, Commissioner Smith, is that they would be coming to the, the side door, which is the same side door that the bank used, which is directly off of Lindy Street.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hey, one, one last thing I, I'll, I'll offer. I think that Anne Marie or Ms. Schansky can confirm. But the letter that Mr. Trinkhaus had provided to you today or yesterday, on the, I think, 20 bullet points or so, we issued a response letter, or, you know, I issued a response letter, and we're due it with our signatory in, in Connecticut. He's the principal of our firm. And all of the things that we would have kind of officially responded to are listed there. So rather than going through and taking up invaluable time with, you know, a point-by-point rebuttal, so to speak, or explanation, I, hopefully, you have a copy of our four-page response to that letter.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Schansky.
Yes.
You have been given a copy of Mr. Garrison's letter, and he does go through the 20 points. And as I said previously, primarily to indicate that things alleged not to be present... and as I said previously, primarily to indicate that things alleged not to be present are present, and explaining other elements about the site plan and its propriety, and, and the loading zone got added. I will tell you that I'm going to now email to Tammy an iteration of the loading zone site plan that omitted the silt fence. It was prepared on the wrong base, but I have the correct base, and I'll forward that to Tammy, so the correct site plan is all in the record. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for our case in chief.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. At this point, then, does the public have any questions or comments that they'd like to make?
Good evening. My name is Pat Panza. I am resident of 357 Lindy Street. We've heard testimony here from the applicant, and they made comments as far as the traffic. Some things that are really not identified is when they talk about the existing plaza, they don't talk about the traffic that comes off the existing plaza that exits from Lindy Street. As a ZBA member, zoning board of appeals, drawings that are supplied by architects are not acceptable on our level. We have A2 surveys. A lot of this stuff would have been eliminated if it was done originally that way. That's why we offered in that manner. So, the other thing I want to address is when they come out of the, this proposed site that they want to do the cannabis, you cannot encumber another property for egress. And what I mean by that is if they're anticipating that they may queue up on Lindy Street, the obvious direction would be to go through the plaza and get to the light. That's what it would be. So, if you've got 20 cars sitting there, and you've got other vehicles that may exit through there, that becomes congested, and that becomes a nuisance to the property, to the other private property. Now, whether or not that particular owner enters into a lease with this facility matters not. What matters is what is going to project in congestion. That hasn't been identified. So, the other unique thing we have here is that these are residents. Everything they talked about is all C1 that's wrapped around other C1s. This is unique. It's a dead end. It's 14 residents. Apparently, it doesn't matter, because all they're looking at is, it meets the criteria. So, we can deliberate all night long about this and whether it's unacceptable. What you're trying to do here is you're trying to put a round peg in a square hole. And the property, size of building, what you have for parking, doesn't work. So, if you look at their own regulations that were adopted in 2015, they hired a conservation for, to do a development of the property, which was offered here. And on there, you'll see that the northwest corner of the property is in wetlands, never identified. The other thing I want to let you know is if you look at the map and how this thing actually, the veins of Trout Brook that goes into Silver Brook, a lot of those veins are through the property that don't go through this system that they talk about. So, without actually identifying this, and I understand what they're saying, it already existed, so why should we bother with it? You know, it doesn't affect anything, whatever. But if you are taking down two of these drive-throughs, in order to get the piping out of there, getting the footings out of there, you're going to be in the water, you're going to be in the water course. It's down 36 inches over there. How do I know that? I live on Lindy Street. I dug over on Lindy Street. So, with that being said, I have entertained a service with Mr. Trinkus, and he will take it from here. I think we've offered as much as we can. Now, you're looking for evidence, you're looking for people that actually have the letters after their name. I will now ask Mr. Trinkus to come up. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Stephen Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut. I live in Southbury, Connecticut, where I have an office. I've been licensed as a PE since 1988. I also have significant expertise in what's known as low-impact development, which is a focus on water quality of runoff and also runoff volumes. And I've done this for a very long time. The first and primary issue here is while your regulations allow an architect or an engineer to prepare a site plan, state licensing laws do not. Architects are not allowed to do site plans right off the bat. So, you have a site plan in front of you that's not valid by Connecticut state law. Under the Consumer Protection Department, there are regulations for surveyors, landscape architects, architects, and engineers. And we have to play within very well-defined fields, and that's what I cite in the first part. Secondly, GIS information is completely inaccurate to use as a base map for a survey. GIS systems are a nice, pretty picture for the residents, for commissioners to look at, to see a big picture of a site or an area, but it is not accurate enough to do a site plan from. You heard the architect say, "Well, this is kind of, you know, just a relativity-type plan." Site plans are based, need to be based on Class A2 surveys done by a licensed land surveyor duly signed and sealed by that surveyor that certifies the accuracy of the information on the plan. The plans that I reviewed had no wetland boundary along Trout Brook, had no erosion control measures on it, had no topography. These are all requirements of your site plan regulations. So, you don't get to waive them. You're missing information. There are some catchbasins shown on these site plans. It was clear in the field to me, looking from the adjacent properties, as I do not drive onto the site, even though it's vacant, that there are drainage structures that are not shown on the site plan. So, again, you have no idea where some of these structures are. You do not know where the water is going. Regarding the separator, if it's an online configuration where all the water is going through it and then going out of it, they are very inefficient at addressing water quality, contrary to manufacturers representatives. They will say that removes 80% of total suspended solids. The reality, based upon monitoring by the New Hampshire Stormwater Center at the University of New Hampshire, which I attended back in the late '70s, shows that they're about 29% efficient when they're in an online configuration. So, even if this site was a blank field today and you were building this building, the use of a separator on this site would not conform to the DEP manual in any shape or form, as far as that goes. The loading space, if I understand what was just briefly talked about, it's the westernmost space in the parking lot next to where the drive-through was. The problem with putting a 30-foot space in there is how do you get the truck in and out of that space? It cannot get in and out of it. You're talking a delivery truck, like a large UPS or FedEx truck, or maybe something larger, but you still cannot back a 30-foot truck out into a 20-foot aisle. It doesn't work. You have angled parking on the north side of the site, adjacent to Trout Brook area. The 20-foot aisle is adequate for those cars because they're already predisposed, they're going to back up and then just simply pull ahead. However, for the 90-degree spaces that are adjacent, perpendicular to the building wall, 20-foot is inadequate to back cars up, especially larger SUVs, which many people still have. Not everybody is driving in a, you know, Mini Cooper or something smaller. 20-foot is extremely tight for 90-degree spaces. It requires multiple turning movements by that driver to get in and out, and that's assuming you don't have other people coming through. I did not, while I looked at the traffic report and the WSB review, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I do not comment on traffic issues. That is not my area of expertise. But as an observation, last week when I was down there, which was either Monday or Wednesday, around 1:00 in the afternoon, I was pulling out of Lindy Street, and there was one car ahead of me looking to take a left onto the Post Road. I just happened to have my phone out, and I put the stopwatch feature on it. It took me a minute to make the right turn onto the Post Road, because nobody let the guy ahead of me make the left out onto that road. So, sitting in a queue of two cars for one minute, waiting for somebody to make a left on the Post Road, is a really poor traffic situation. And this was the middle of the day. This was not on a Saturday afternoon. This is 1:00, 1:15 on a weekday, when you would expect the traffic to be generally light. And if it's that way on a weekday, I would think Saturday, and I would submit that Saturday, with the amount of commercial development on the Post Road, would be substantially worse, as far as that goes. The applicant has shown a turning movement from the Post Road and then from Lindy Street into the site of a supposed emergency vehicle. What we do not have is the movement of that vehicle throughout the site, and it doesn't take a traffic engineer to see that the one coming in off the Post Road isn't going to necessarily make that turn without running over the island that's right off the right front corner of the building. You need to see the turning movements of the vehicles coming in from the road and getting back out onto the road. That little template that is shown is a simple turning template. It's a static turning template that we've used for years until the software programs basically came out, such as AutoTurn, which allows you to actually see the movement of a vehicle along a given path that you define, as far as that goes. Again, you know, you don't have wetland boundaries, you don't have topography, you really have nothing on the site plan. If this was not done by a surveyor, if I was a PE signing this, I would be taking a huge liability professionally to sign a plan that was not based on an accurate survey. And I simply, quite honestly, in 40 years of practice, wouldn't do that. But you have a plan that is not valid in any shape or form, as far as that goes. As I note, it's not in compliance with many of your regulations. Regarding increase of pollutant loads, you're taking a roof down, which generally doesn't have a big source of pollutants, and you're making parking out of it. And with the traffic generation that is going to come through the site, the more vehicles moving through, the more pollutant loads of particularly metals and hydrocarbons you will see deposited on the site, which will then be ultimately discharged, it appears to be Trout Brook, that would be the logical point. But again, we don't know because we don't have an accurate survey of the site. All of the setback distances, all of the dimensions for parking are basically pie-in-the-sky numbers because they're not based on a real survey. Now, we heard earlier that there was an ASBID survey that was also used. Well, here's the reality. First off, when you, when we take a Mylar, which we used to use in the surveying field, and you make prints of it, whether they're BlackLine or what was the old BlueLine prints, that BlueLine print is actually a little distorted simply because of the process of making it. Now, in technology today, we can have companies scan those in, we can import them into AutoCAD programs, and we can scale them up. It does, it looks nice, doesn't mean it's accurate, absolutely not. It's a pretty picture. You need an accurate survey in CAD by a licensed surveyor, which then the engineer does his work on. So, as far as I'm concerned professionally, there's really no choice but to deny the application because it doesn't comply with the regulations. There may be a lot of other issues which the neighbors have raised and the commission has raised, but the fundamental issue here is you have an invalid site plan that doesn't conform. Thank you.
Thank you. Invite you to the podium? Come on up to the podium.
All right, thank you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, my name is Cory Alisea, and...
I'm sorry.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, can you spell it?
It's Cory Alisea, so it's C-O-R-I, and it's A-L-I-C-E-A. And I was diagnosed with terminal glioblastoma, brain cancer, in 2014. And I have been working with CT Pharma for, since the onset of that, for about eight years. I've been taking their medication, and I wouldn't be alive today if it wasn't for this company and all the medicine that they've provided for me, so I get a little emotional. I live in Milford. I have two children, 14, who's in high school, and then my daughter's 11, and she goes to Harborside. And like I said, it's funny driving here because we used to go to the playground right here all the time. So, it's close to home, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that I'm the face of, you know, everybody thinks of marijuana, medical marijuana, as a negative, but for me, it's been a complete lifesaver. My father is a retired New York State trooper, and he had his thoughts, negative thoughts at first. But obviously, seeing the results and the benefits that it's given me and my children, and not having to take any OxyContin or any pain medications that I just don't want to take anymore, I don't want to be numbed. I just want to be able to live my life the best that I can in CT Pharma, and their medication has allowed me to do so. I've had open brain craniotomies, awake ones. How many surgeries have I?
Three, three years of chemo.
Three years of chemo. The radiation I went through, so I'm just so thankful and blessed for this medication. And I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of it and not to put such a negativity on it. You may associate it with other people, or what, how they use it, or how they choose to live their lifestyle, but that does not portray what we're trying to do here. It's to educate people, to let them know the benefits of it, and the headaches. Like I said, for me, they completely dissipated once this medication was instilled. And like I said, I've been taking it for eight years, morning and evening. I do oils, and they have no side effects, I have no pain. I live my life regularly every day. Most people don't even know that I have brain cancer, and if you look up glioblastoma, it has a life expectancy of 15 months. So, like I said, I just feel like I'm blessed to be here, and I could go on and on about all the hard times, but I will choose to not go that route. So, if anybody has any questions about the medicine, or positives, negatives, or, because I know a lot of people probably here have a lot of questions, so please, answer. Ask away.
I've got a couple. In your experience, do you use, do you frequent the Milford branch?
No, I don't. I go to the Branford one. So, when I, because I've been doing it for so long, and I, with the owners at the Blue Point Wellness.
Yeah, Nick Tamburino.
You have to...
Oh, sorry, sorry. Because when I first was diagnosed, and I had, I wasn't able to speak or anything for a long time, so Nick Tamburino from Blue Point Wellness was able to assist and...
Yeah, I'm Cory's husband, Will.
Sorry.
Last name Alisea. And just to...
That's your first name?
Will? Yeah, and just to elaborate on that, as Cory was saying, when this all started, it was all about, you know, leaving no stone unturned. Three, at the time, our child, our son's seven, our daughter's three.
Yeah, so it was...
You're not going to take any chances, you're going to do everything you possibly can. So, we were going all over the country ensuring that we had the best medical care.
Yeah.
Doing everything that we could.
Duke, we went to UCLA, I went to Dana Farber, anything and everything that we could possibly do to try and get it so I could stay alive.
No, what I was trying to get to was, when you would go to pick up your medicine...
Yeah.
Just describe that process to me.
Oh, so in Branford, when I go for my medication, I call ahead, actually, no, I don't, yeah, I do. I usually call ahead to tell them that I'm, I would like to come and make my order, and then they'll let me know when it's ready via email typically, and I will just go in. They have a buzzer because it's pretty secure, and they have to look at my card with my license as well, which I don't know if you guys are familiar. It's a pretty lengthy process to get certified. You have to go through, it's, every year I have to get recertified. God, it's a lengthy questionnaire of, "Do you have any more specifics?"
Well, now that it's been eight years, we just, you know, renew the membership, confirm your residency and everything. But the big thing with Cory's prescription, as she said, she'll call it in, and then we'll either get a call or an email, and they will just say, "Okay, Cory, come today," which, Wednesday.
Yeah.
And then at that point, Cory's in there for two or three minutes.
Yeah, they buzz me in.
We're always a walk-in, because we know, we have such a good rapport.
Yes.
And that's something that I feel is important with...
They're like family to us.
Yeah. This isn't just a facility where we're thinking just of the medicine. They truly care, and...
They've been catering to my medicine if I have issues. They reach out to my doctors in Duke, and, you know, we try really hard to do it. But back to your point, because we didn't get there yet... But back to your point, because we didn't get there yet. So, basically, when I go in, I just, I have to wait, there's only one patient in at a time. So, I wait if I'm outside and I'm, I just buzz in. They check my IDs through the glass, make sure that everything is accurate. And then there's a second buzzer that I have to go through the door, which opens up into beautiful, modern, corporate, not any, it just is like I'm going into a very professional doctor's office. And then you have selections to choose.
Are you, have you been, when you are there, do you experience people hanging around?
No, in and out. Professionals, mostly in their suits. They're there for one reason. They're very kind because usually you have relationships, not always, you just are cordial, polite. You go up to the window. Obviously, they all know one another because if you've been going there for many, many years, it's a pleasant, hi, how's your family? They show pictures to each other about their kids. Oh, my wife had a newborn, stuff like that. You know, it's just normal business as usual. It really, for me, it's dependent on the person and how they react to things.
Very much.
Absolutely.
If I could just add to it, one thing that Cory mentioned, and it's so true, we are vested. While we're Milford residents for the past 13 years, we're a stone's throw away from Treat Farm on Old Tavern.
Absolutely, so it would be amazing.
You know, every year, firemen's carnivals, we're at them, the playground right behind the town hall.
And he's a father as well, so he's a public service.
And, yeah, worked as a fireman for the city of Bridgeport for the past 17 years.
Yeah.
So, Lord knows, I know what the opioids can do.
Yes.
I know what a danger that is to people's lives, how devastating it can be. This is not that to us.
No.
This has been nothing more than a lifesaving medication that has played a positive role.
My children are aware and they do, you know, because you know when you go to schools, they talk about drugs. And for my son, you know, I have the conversation, you know, not, obviously marijuana can be used negatively, but it also can be used in a much beneficial way too. So, I have that conversation, so he sees it in a positive light. It's really in the eye of the beholder. If you want to use it negatively, that's your stupidity and your stupid choice. If you want to use it for positivity, then great, so, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays as well.
Yeah, happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I come to the podium?
Yes, please.
I hope I can make it.
Thank you so much. Bless you.
That forgive me, I'm heading into back surgery, 13-hour surgery. But in any event, that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is, and I'm happy to hear that, that she's getting some relief from the cannabis. I have renal cell carcinoma, so I do understand how these things work. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about, before you leave, I've got a question. The place that you went to, okay, you're surrounded by other commercial properties. There's no residents attached to it. That's correct, I know that for a fact. What we're talking about here is a residence. We're talking about it's attached to 17 children. So, you can talk about all you want about telling the children, we don't want to do, you don't want to do drugs, you know, find another way. You're, they're sending a wrong message here that we don't want you to do drugs, but it's okay to have a hybrid facility attached to a residential area. We're not saying that the medical portion is bad. We're not saying that at all. What we're saying is the location is bad, the logistics is bad.
There's always a development.
Well, this is a, well, these other, hold on. These other locations, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, thank God first of all that you're alive.
Thank you.
Thank God that I'm alive, okay? But you've got to think about the health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah, you really should, if you have something to say, you should direct it to the commission.
Okay, thank you. I'll say it to, yes, thank you, I will. I appreciate that comment.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I apologize if I turn around and sound like it was directed, okay? But it's personal to me too, I have cancer, so. Thank you for your time, appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Plan Zoning Commission. My name is Mitch Goldblatt, 291 Drummond Road in Orange. I've listened to some of the arguments we've heard tonight and some that you heard in previous meeting or meetings. Cannabis is now legal in the state of Connecticut for adult use. Even though I have never have and probably never will buy this product, I support the application. Let's talk about some of the reasons and some of the things I've heard. Morality. This location is located directly across the street from an existing adult-use facility. I think I can explain the use of cannabis to children much easier than I can explain what is sold at VIP. By the way, as a town, we went to federal court to prevent VIP over 20 years ago and lost. When it first opened, the amount of traffic was surprisingly heavy, but quite frankly, all of our collective fears as a town never materialized, including effects on our children. Next, drugs. This is a controlled substance with major restrictions to access, tremendous security, and other restrictions. I believe cannabis sales may be more time-consuming and frustrating than getting narcotics. Even though you may need a prescription for OxyContin, you can have someone else get it for you at your local pharmacy here in Orange. There's no security present, there are no cameras, there's no bulletproof glass, and you can have underage children with you while picking it up. We all know the stories of what OxyContin has done to destroy lives that it was intended to help. Yet the restrictions on purchasing cannabis seem far greater than the pharmacy. By the way, we call it a pharmacy, we used to call it a drug store. Traffic, we've heard a lot about. Do all the traffic studies you've asked for. Some of you may recall, just a few hundred yards up the street, a store called Amazing opened many years ago. That's where Harbor Freight is now. That resulted in traffic jams on weekends, which resulted in lots of police overtime directing traffic on and off the post road. Like most store openings, it eventually died down. And that was before the fifth lane was put on the post road to alleviate all the, a lot of the backup on the post road. At a time when traffic used to back up on the post road regularly every Saturday morning, you couldn't move. Now you can because we have a fifth lane that helps ease the traffic in and out. If people do have a problem getting out of Lindy Street, they have an access route to a traffic light through Hitchcock Plaza. Is it convenient? Maybe not, but there's another way out. We've listened to car counts, listened to car counts tonight. Has anybody counted the number of cars that go in and out in an hour of Dunkin' Donuts? There are two in this town. Neither of them have a traffic signal. Everybody's got to make a left turn or right turn out onto the post road from both of them. How about Cumberland Farms? How many traffic, how many cars go in and out to get gas and stop at the service station and the convenience store right there at an hour? I don't know, but I'm willing to bet it's close to your 60 per hour, maybe even more. How about, you talk about the traffic and how difficult it is to turn? This town has approved Wendy's? Have you seen the site of that? Places like Mad Mike's? Have you seen the site there? The Dunkin' Donuts, the one closest to this facility? Have you seen the traffic there and the tight turns? We manage, we make it work. It can work. The TPZC has acted and has reacted to residents' fears and projections about debilitating traffic impact on residential streets. If they had acted, excuse me, if they had acted on residents' fears and projections about what would happen on residential streets, the following would never have been built in the town of Orange. Target, Christmas tree shops, the Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witnesses, and the Home Depot, and probably not Founder's Way. Some of you don't recall the people on Lindy Street being opposed to Founder's Way, even being constructed, and no one talked about how much water came off of Founder's Way in those driveways into the brook. You have concerns about traffic? Let's not forget, as Attorney Shansky said, or I think it was maybe the other woman for the applicant, the law allows the town to assess the retailer up to $50,000, can't imagine, up to $50,000 for policing, police and traffic control if necessary. Put those restrictions in. Fear of clientele. Cannabis is and will be consumed by adults from Orange and neighboring towns. Let's face it, no business survives on the post road just with Orange customers. Certainly not Kohl's, Target, ShopRite, Trader Joe's, Raymour &amp; Flanagan, or even Hibachi Grill, which is right next to Lindy Street and close to the neighborhood where it's being proposed. And by the way, there are three accesses out of that plaza onto Lindy Street, and the two that you're talking about tonight are already there. They've been there for years. Water quality has already been addressed, it does not really belong before this commission. However, lest you forget, before this was a bank, it was a restaurant. It was three restaurants. There were grease traps, there was the same traffic running on and off of that same pavement in regular maintenance, in need of regular maintenance. I don't recall the interveners coming in for water quality when Founder's Way was built either. Finally, zoning, which is why we're all here. This is a site in an existing commercial zone. This is not on Lindy Street. It is on the Boston Post Road. It is on Route 1. Orange should be proud if it's well-planned zoning. And as I said, some may not recall that this site used to be a residence, I mean, it used to be a restaurant, which included a very active nightlife, which led to many complaints and calls of the loud noise, late traffic, and live bans that made a lot of noise for people on Lindy Street. I don't think you're going to have the same issues anywhere near that with this proposal. Also, there, and I've heard the concerns about cannabis, there are a number of uses on the post road, some of which I'm not fond of, that are quite, and some are quite close to where I live. We live in a town along with as many retail establishments, including at least one porn shop, gun shops, a shooting range, vaping outlets, tattoo parlors, massage parlors, cigar lounges, and several liquor stores. A cannabis retailer in a freestanding building on the Boston Post Road is not going to be with, is not going to destroy our town. Please listen to everyone. Require all the necessary restrictions, including hours of operation, traffic controls, security measures, and any other necessary conditions of approval. Thank you for your time. As always, I thank you for your service to our town and trust you'll make a decision that's in the best interest of the town of Orange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Yes. After this, we'll take a five-minute break, okay? We'll resume.
Members of the commission, good evening. My name is Shayna Goldblatt and I live at 291 Drummond Road. Behind my house is Orange Jailhouse, which has live bans, alcohol sales, and Grayson's Guns, a shooting range. So, I understand what it's like to live at a place where nearby there is noise, but you live with it. That's how it works when you live next to the Boston Post Road. You moved there, you knew where you were moving to. I am here to address controversy over the opening of a recreational cannabis facility here in Orange. The use of recreational cannabis is legal, just like cigarettes, vapes, and alcohol. Just because it is not attractive to have in the neighborhood does not mean that it should not be allowed. Another factor that has been pointed out is the safety of these facilities. As a user of recreational cannabis myself, I can tell you from personal experience, as I have been in multiple recreational facilities in neighboring states, that these are some of the safest buildings I have ever entered. When you enter the facility, you first encounter security, which is in a separate or secondary entrance. Say you're coming into the town hall here and there's the first entrance here, you will be buzzed in. First, before you are buzzed in, you have to provide ID, identification, where they look, just like you would before entering a 21-plus bar. You show your ID prior to entering. Once entering the, once you show ID and you are approved to enter, you enter the facility. Once entering the facility, there are typically one or two additional security persons walking around or towards the exit. Once a recreational facility opens up here in Orange, I would expect you to require the same type of security. Some opposing the implementation of a recreational marijuana facility are claiming that the dispensary will encourage their children to use cannabis after they have taught their children to say no to drugs, that they want to keep the residents of this town safe, or that people will leave the dispensary and smoke on their street. As a lifelong resident of this town, a cannabis user, and the face of the generation that will begin to raise their families here in the next couple of years, I can tell you that all of these statements are far from the truth. From a young age, we are taught to say no to drugs, no to peer pressure, from our parents, teachers, or the DARE programs in schools. However, much of this happens anyway and has been happening without a recreational facility here in this town. Many teenagers will drink alcohol, they'll smoke vapes or cigarettes, they do in Amity High School, and yes, they will smoke marijuana. No matter what parents and educators do, teenagers will experiment, whether in high school, college, or elsewhere. Having a recreational dispensary in this town is no different from having a smoke shop or liquor store, and in all actuality, it is safer and more secure. Having a recreational cannabis facility will help keep the residents of our town safe by ensuring that cannabis users are buying from a regulated facility where they can be sure that their product isn't laced with something else, they aren't buying from strangers, and there is a limit on how much one can buy at a time. Buying cannabis from outside sources can lead to a multitude of issues, including putting our residents' safety, health, and concerns of overdose more at risk. Cannabis bought from an outside source is not regulated, and who they bought it from may have bought it from someone else who may have bought it from someone else. This puts residents' safety at risk as that cannabis may have been laced with fentanyl, LSD, cocaine, or heroin. Being able to buy cannabis from a dispensary instead of strangers will provide users with the knowledge of where the product is coming from, that it is safe, and that it has not been tampered with. I have never seen, nor have I ever thought about smoking up outside of the facility. First of all, there is typically security present as well as the risk of getting a DUI, just like one would if drinking outside of a liquor store. Purchasing cannabis from a recreational facility is an adult-only activity, not teenagers buying their first vape from a gas station or attempting to purchase alcohol from a liquor store. Additionally, it was quoted from a resident in the Milford Orange Times that children might not be able to play hockey in the street anymore because of the clientele coming through. That is a direct quote. I can tell you that from my experience, that the clientele that will be coming through will be young adults of age like myself, working men and women, older adults, and everyone in between. To suspect that these adults, including myself, are going to abuse the privilege of buying from a recreational dispensary by smoking up on a residential street or inhibit children from playing in the street is not only rude but discriminatory. Unlike a liquor store, all IDs are thoroughly checked prior to entering, regardless of age or status, leading it to be safer, more secure, and less prone to the use of fake IDs. In addition, using cannabis is typically an act that people enjoy in the comfort of their own home, as it is a way to relax. Personally, I, as well as many others that enjoy recreational cannabis, do so in order to help with chronic anxiety. Personally, I use it to help me go to sleep or calm down from an over-stimulating event, and it helps. And I use that on top of medication I am already prescribed. According to a study at the University of Washington, the use of THC and CBD have been shown to decrease anxiety. Being able to buy from a recreational dispensary here in town would be of great benefit to not only myself and other cannabis users, but to the town itself as a source of revenue. So, when looking at who is opposing the implementation of a recreational cannabis facility and what they are opposing, are they truly looking out for the safety and benefit of the town and its residents, or just for themselves and their own personal grievances? Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll resume. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start the meeting again, restart the meeting. All right, let's continue with the public comment. Let's try to keep it focused on zoning matters, if we can, so, you know, with the hour getting late. Yes, approach the podium, please.
Well, I'm Tim O'Rourke. I have a house up in 52 Falls Village, and I've got some firsthand information that probably you people have been thinking about trying to approve this, and that's the congestion that you're going to have. In Great Barrington, about two, two or three years ago, they opened it to the recreational marijuana. Before that, it was just, you know, people would come in and pick it up. Once they opened it up, the lines were at least an hour and a half long. It was, they, they made the mistake of opening this place in town in Great Barrington, so it was right near a shopping center. They filled the shopping center up, they ended up having to tow cars out of there. The lines were, at a minimum, an hour and a half on the weekends, and during the week they were a little bit less. And that went on until fairly recently when they've opened, there's four or five of them up there now, and now it's kind of dispersed a bit. But the initial was, I mean, I could see the, the lane just being totally blocked coming down Route One. That's, that's my observation of what I saw when they opened, when they first opened up there, being the first ones to start selling it.
All right. Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Jesse Parks, 12 Founder's Way, Orange, Connecticut. I'd like to thank the Commission for extending the public comment period for this issue. It's clear from the public commentary that took place at the October 18th meeting in 2022 that there's a lot of opposition to this proposal from the Orange community. While I did not attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings on September 6, 2022, and September 20, 2022, I have taken the opportunity to review the minutes of these meetings, as well as those proceedings that were recorded regarding comparisons to proposed hybrid-use facility to existing businesses in the area. Certainly, this is a recurring theme. Many of the people who spoke did draw comparisons in the past to existing businesses in the community, as people have tonight. And previous meetings, Tim Gorman, who's here with us tonight, indicated that he would compare the business that they operate to CVS and Rite Aid in terms of current operational mechanisms. Town Council Vincent Marino on September 20 stated that he viewed the proposed facility as something no different than the sale of alcohol and saw it as comparable to alcohol. Rich DeAndrea, a traffic engineer for the applicant, likewise provided comparison to traffic observed at gas stations, pharmacies, and fast-food restaurants on the October 18, 2022 meeting. Tonight, and as well as at the meeting on September 6, 2022, Mitch Goldblatt, in his testimony, compared the dispensary businesses to pharmacies, stating he supports it, and goes on to discuss compatibility with other stores in the area. He also expressed his opinion that this standalone location was desirable as it was not adjacent to any incompatible businesses, such as those that may attract children. I would like to point out that the site plan is directly adjacent to a plaza that contains a school bus stop, a children's toy store, a children's dance school, a pet store, as well as dental and eye care centers that attract many pediatric patients. Clearly, these are businesses and services that attract children. The text amendment that the town has adopted prohibits cannabis establishments within 1,500 feet of schools and houses of worship. Why shouldn't our children enjoy these same protections in their neighborhood when they're going to dance school and when they're going to the pet store? I would assert that these aforementioned comparisons are not valid at all, as we currently have no recreational purveyors of a Schedule I substance defined as drugs with no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse by the DEA within the existing community or the state at this time. Documented adverse side effects of marijuana proposed by the FDA and the DEA include risk of addiction, impaired brain development, a role as a gateway drug, relation to mental illness, adverse effect on school performance and lifetime achievement, as well as risk of motor vehicle accidents and risk of cancer. Schedule I substances include drugs of abuse such as heroin and LSD. Again, I would currently point out that there are no purveyors of a Schedule I substance for recreational purposes in our community or our state. Green Thumb representatives at the September 6, 2022 meeting indicated that their Milford facility currently serves, services approximately 200 to 250 transactions per day for medical purposes. Attorney Marino reported at the September 20, 2022 meeting that projections for recreational municipal cannabis tax revenue would be up to $1 million annually for the town. At a 3% municipal recreational cannabis tax rate, this would correlate to more than $30 million in recreational sales per year. Clearly, this facility will represent a regional attraction that will generate significant traffics, traffic once hybrid status is achieved and recreational sale of marijuana ensues. The board pointed out earlier that they anticipated approximately double in the, in the volume of sales, up to 3,000 per week. If you divide that 30 or 33 million by a couple hundred dollars per transaction, that's more than 3,000 recreational sales per week at that facility. So clearly, this will be a busy regional destination. How much, how much will daily traffic increase at this location? The Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual reported that marijuana dispensaries are proving to be one of the biggest retail traffic generators, generators in the United States, with about 10 times more traffic than the typical retail store and five times more than a pharmacy. Will this facility be able to accommodate traffic if daily transactions at this location increase five to time, five to 10 times daily? How will this impact the surrounding community? Peer review of the engineering traffic generation and parking data pertaining to the proposed uses for the subject property acknowledges that transaction data cannot necessarily be attributed to traffic generation, and therefore recommends that the applicant collect traffic count data at an existing store with similar operating conditions for comparison with ITE trip rates and use for traffic forecasting. This was discussed earlier by the Commission tonight. Will this peer review recommendation be implemented? If so, why not? Furthermore, the applicant has indicated that facility employees will occupy 20 of the available 35 parking spaces for the subject property at any given time. As noted in the revised supplemental traffic analysis, the applicant has obtained a short-term three-month lease of 20 parking spaces within a nearby property tonight disclosed as a Hitchcock Plaza to accommodate employee parking at the initial opening. Is this not a clear acknowledgement that parking at the facility is inadequate? In the discussion that ensued previously regarding queuing and extra spaces, available spaces, you talked about having 34 spaces, perhaps 16 in front, 14 in back. I'm not sure what the dimensions are, but, you know, two of those spaces are limited use because they're handicapped. If you have to bring your employees back into that facility, how are you going to accommodate the queuing? How are you going to accommodate loading? How are you going to accommodate general traffic to the site with the volumes indicated? Is it customary to encumber another adjacent property to accommodate parking deficiencies at a primary location? These are some of the questions that I propose to the Planning and Zoning Committee. I'd like to distribute some information to the committee regarding a facility in Fall River, Massachusetts, that represents a somewhat similar layout to the proposed plan here in Orange. Here's some of the information regarding trip generation. Here's some of the information regarding trip generation from ITE.
Is that the one that the gentleman just mentioned before?
No, different one, just Fall River, Mass. And I'd like to discuss it in a moment, if I could distribute these news articles regarding traffic and community problems at the facility. There's another one for the committee, and one more. Lot of paper going around tonight. So as I said, this location in Fall River, a recreational weed dispensary, represents a circumstance eerily similar to the layout of Lindy Street and Boston Post Road. It's a facility located on a state highway with the adjacent residential dead-end road leading to the parking lot, and there is a Google Maps picture that depicts that. But the bottom line is, this was the city's first recreational cannabis dispensary, and the attached news article is clearly document that traffic and parking problems can be a long-term headache for residents in these areas. The facility in question, as I mentioned, Northeast Alternatives, represents a situation very similar to our own proposed location. The business is located on a state highway with the facility's parking lot abutting a roadway that is a residential dead-end street. Apart from general traffic congestion, residents of the adjacent neighborhood have reported issues of property damage caused by dispensary customers and customer cars being parked in front of their driveways. Residents also cite negative impact on property values. Keep in mind that the Fall River facility has more than double the parking capacity of the proposed facility in Orange. Also, unlike our state, it's in a state that has multiple alternative recreational dispensary locations available. This proposed facility in Orange will represent a regional destination in our neighborhood with no nearby recreational dispensaries to dissipate customer traffic. The Orange Special Use Text Amendment states traffic generated by customer and employee trips and deliveries to and from the cannabis establishment shall not create a substantial adverse impact on other businesses and property owners in the vicinity. Additionally, it states a cannabis establishment will be managed in a manner to protect against nuisance conditions in parking areas, sidewalks, streets, and surrounding the premises and its adjacent properties. Nuisance includes, but is not limited to, disturbance of the peace, open public consumption of cannabis, pedestrian or vehicular queuing that results in obstruction of sidewalks or public ways, littering, loitering, illegal parking, loud or sustained noises, disturbing lighting, or citations for violations of state or local traffic laws and regulations. Does it not seem likely that a hybrid cannabis facility at the proposed Post Road location would represent a significant and lasting nuisance to the community? I ask the Commission if these nuisance conditions ensue after initiation of operation, who will enforce the guidelines of the text amendment to remedy these problems? Residents in the neighborhood have indicated significant lack of response to simple complaints for litter and blight in the community. I highly doubt that there would be effective enforcement of any of these nuisance provisions. I previously mentioned to the committee that I used to operate a facility, a surgery center as a co-tenant next to the current operation in New Haven Avenue, 318. Here's an additional letter from one of my partners, who's also an Orange resident, that reiterates some of the nuisance experience that we had there, which prompted us to relocate our facility. Here's some additional police communications from the Milford Police Department regarding that facility that I'd like you to take a look at. As I mentioned, I previously related to the Commission and sent a letter to Mr. Zioli regarding my negative experience as a co-tenant with Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing at their current 318 New Haven Avenue location in Milford, Connecticut. Please see the letter provided by one of my business partners at this location, who's also an Orange resident. He reiterates the difficulties experienced with traffic congestion, public consumption of cannabis products in the parking area, and security issues created for our surgical center staff. Attorney Shansky and Anne Marie Zamba have previously communicated that the operation of the current facility in Milford is much different under new ownership with Green Thumb. They have asked not to be held accountable for transgressions that occurred prior to their takeover. However, review of Milford Police Department Communications for 318 New Haven Avenue from January 1, 2018 through October 25, 2022 does reveal a significant number of police call events for Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing, including multiple burglar alarms, a holdup, and breach of peace. This far exceeds similar activity for co-tenants at the 318 New Haven Avenue location, and would seem to refute their claim that they have an excellent track record, as stated by Attorney Shansky at the October 18, 2022 meeting. As purveyors of a Schedule I substance, they are limited in their ability to participate in conventional banking, which necessitates mostly cash payments. Again, this is a distinction in comparison to existing retail businesses at their current location and proposed location in Orange. Likewise, this is exactly the reason why these facilities and their customers are a target for robberies. Clearly, this represents more than a nuisance, and I ask the Commission to consider the burden on town public safety officials and police. I would also point out to the Commission that these security issues were documented during the operation of the facility as a medical dispensary. Is it not reasonable to assert that these circumstances could be exacerbated by the increased volume created by recreational sales? Will this create an undue burden on the town public safety officials as they work to ensure the safety of employees and the public, and to protect the premises and community from theft or other criminal activity? I just wanted to mention, as an aside, discussing loading zone. At the 318 New Haven Avenue facility, delivery of the product that I observed on more than one occasion essentially involved their delivery driver backing a Sprinter-type van up to the back door of the building. He would open the back doors of the van and then take out what appeared to be like a white cake box with a green marijuana label on it, and carry a handful into the building, leaving the doors on the van wide open while he went into the building, leaving it unattended. I'm not sure what security protocols are going to be in place at the Post Road location, but certainly the type that were utilized at the 318 New Haven Avenue facility were deficient. I'd also like to distribute a couple more items regarding some of the statements that were made by the applicant's representative, Anne Zamba, at previous meetings. Recreational marijuana use also represents, to me, a situation much like the circumstances that promulgated our current opioid crisis. Physicians were assured and admonished that they were not adequately treating patients' pain levels, and assured by pharmaceutical companies and industry representatives that providing opioids for pain would not lead to addiction. Clearly, this is not the case, as it is well documented that the pharmaceutical industry was culpable in creating this crisis. Fentanyl is now the leading cause of death in people ages 18 to 45. The pharmaceutical industry just reached a record $26 billion settlement to help provide resources desperately needed to help fight the opioid crisis in our communities. These corporations reap profits from the pain and suffering of Connecticut families. Attorney Shansky has asserted that it is common medical regime to have access to cannabis. I think 18 medical marijuana dispensaries in a state with 3.6 million residents hardly qualifies this substance as common medical regime. Be that as it may, I have significant concerns that the recreational scale of a Schedule I substance like marijuana with documented adverse side effects will have a negative impact on our community and may ultimately lead to another epidemic of addiction. Anne Marie Zamba has stated that there have been no deaths reported from marijuana overdose. However, reports of a four-year-old Virginia boy dying after consuming weed gummies on May 8 of this year, as well as a 27-year-old Massachusetts female cannabis worker dying from occupational exposure on January 7 of this year, would seem to contradict her claims. Multiple news outlets in just the past week reported 10 middle school students in LA who overdosed on marijuana edibles. I would encourage the committee to consider these factors when rendering a decision. Are these the type of pseudo-patients that you're discussing, that you hope to open up recreational marijuana to? Children in our community that can overdose on poison edibles? I would encourage the committee to consider these factors when rendering a decision, particularly given the paucity of information regarding the impact of recreational sale of marijuana in Connecticut. I can say with certainty that no one has died from not having access to recreational marijuana. Furthermore, I would like to indicate that there are also environmental concerns related to the proposed facility. Green Thumb has indicated that they plan to undertake construction related to drive-through services and parking at the back of the property. Our expert testimony provided by Engineer Trinkus substantiates these concerns, and I will not discuss that any further. Previously, members of the Planning and Zoning Committee have commented upon their initial decision to undertake a moratorium regarding cannabis in the town of Orange. The rationale provided for this moratorium was to allow the town to observe the role of this relatively nascent industry in a recreational fashion. Some of us have offered the opinion that there is still not adequate information available to render judgment. Police Chief Gagnon reportedly toured the facility and met with Green Thumb personnel to review their internal security plan, ultimately rendering his approval of the plan. Attorney Shansky stated in the September 20, 2022 meeting that she was delighted to have the acquiescence and approval of the chief of police. Review of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings from September contained statements indicating that Chief Gagnon endorsed the moratorium on cannabis in the town of Orange as initially implemented by the committee. Is this still the case? Does his approval of the security plan for the proposed facility also indicate that he supports the opening of a dispensary for recreational marijuana products in the town, a Schedule I drug, according to the DEA? I would ask Chief Gagnon if he would support the opening of this hybrid facility in his town, next to his own neighborhood and home, next to his own children's bus stop. Also, it's acknowledged that marijuana utilization can impair motor skills and driving. As such, it's recognized in SB 1201 that road safety is a concern. SB 1201 calls for increased numbers of officers trained in advanced roadside impairment driving enforcement, as well as drug recognition expert training for officers. How many Orange officers have completed the advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement training? How many have completed DRE classes? Many sources report that marijuana dispensary facilities can create significant increase in traffic in comparison to traditional retail and pharmacy venues. Some sources cite tenfold increases at these locations. SB 1201 has mandated that the cannabis retailer must provide up to $50,000 in reimbursement for the traffic control at these locations upon initiation of sales. Does the Commission, and does the chief of police and public safety officials believe that this reflects adequate compensation to manage what is clearly a high volume of projected traffic at this facility? Will this nuisance situation pose an undue burden upon town public safety officials and police? If you refer to the Fall River documentation, you can see that over the course of the two years that it was initially in operation, the residents made numerous consistent complaints regarding traffic issues, as well as other nuisance conditions in their community. No satisfactory resolutions were achieved. They were offered multiple insurances, that the operator would continue to offer improvements. Two years later, still dealing with a major headache, decreased property values, and inadequate access to their neighborhood. In summary, I've offered commentary expressing my concerns regarding the application for the special permit use and site plan application at 175 Boston Post Road. Recreational marijuana dispensaries are a nascent industry without precedent in our state. As such, traffic and environmental concerns potentially represent a severe detriment to the quality of life, property values, and community environment in the surrounding neighborhood. Specifically, expert testimony provided by Engineer Stephen Trinkus indicates that the application is incomplete and thus must be denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, the fact that the applicant plans to lease off-site parking spaces demonstrates that parking capacity is deficient at the proposed location, with associated concerns regarding traffic and queuing onto the Post Road. How will emergency vehicles get into our neighborhood if they're blocked by queued traffic of 10 cars on Lindy Street and additional queued cars on the Boston Post Road? As such, I respectfully request that the Commission acknowledge these deficiencies and reject the special use permit. Lastly, I'd like to thank the members for their time and attention, as well as their dedicated service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Hopefully, we're getting near the end of... Jimmy?
I think I think I'm a glazer whilst ago.
Okay. Is anybody else... Who else do we have speaking after this?
I'm going to be quick.
Jimmy?
Mr.?
I also have one letter to read.
My name is Jim Glazer, or James Glazer. I live at 332 Lindy Street in Orange. I'm just going to tail on to what Mr. Parks had said. I have some information, more paper, that shows... This is a map of Connecticut. One of it actually shows, this is all the places in Connecticut where there's medical marijuana locations as we speak right now. I'll pass this around. And then, if you go on to the site and put recreational marijuana, the only ones that are here are either in Massachusetts or in Rhine, New York. It's the closest one to the south here. We had Anne Marie mention that they had approved a whole bunch of things that were up north. Orange is going to be the first one to the south. So it is definitely going to be a destination, along with the traffic and the queuing and everything of that nature. I can say from experience, this is not speculation, I can say from experience, from living on Lindy Street for 15 years, that if you have a guy that's going to go out there and make a left-hand turn, and he hesitates, and he doesn't make that turn, you can sit there for at least five to 10 minutes, waiting for people making turns. It's going to queue up, and it's going to back up all the way down Lindy Street and/or into the property. That's not speculation, that's my fact of what I live every day. So please, I'd like to pass this around, and...
Is that the thing you already passed?
No. One of them is the medical marijuana. This is medical, and that's recreational.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm Sheila Panza at 357 Lindy Street. I agree with what my fellow residents had said, a couple of other things about the traffic and the parking. Hitchcock Plaza also has full-size tour buses that come to the Hibachi Grill, and so they will take up a whole row of parking. In addition to the 20 parking places that are supposed to be leased for six months, that doesn't leave a whole lot of parking for their existing businesses. Human nature, people are going to do what they can to avoid having to wait on Lindy Street. All the residents, we do, we cut through the parking lot of Hitchcock Plaza. I don't see any way where you're not going to have a queue. Somebody else mentioned Dunkin' Donuts backs up. It does. It backs up onto River Road where there's a queue. It also blocks access for people that want to exit out the other neighboring businesses on River Road. Somebody made a comment about TD Bank. It had... It wasn't a problem with backup. They had three drive-through spots, and it wasn't a particularly busy bank. If it was, it would still be in business. They closed that location. They weren't a very... It wasn't viable for them to keep it open. I think we're trying to put a square peg into a round hole with this location for the dispensary, for the hybrid, for the pot store. I think, I ask you not to ignore Engineer Trinkus's comments about the site plan being based on... on a survey that's not a valid survey. I think that's going to run into bigger problems down the road. And because it was used in the past is all the more reason to correct that deficiency. It doesn't work. It sounds to me like you have a very poor foundation, that's not a valid one, and you're trying to build on top of that. And if for no other reason alone, I think that the application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Brian McGrew, Ridge Road. I'll be quick. I don't have prepared remarks. These are just in responses to some of the things that were said tonight. With regard to the residents of Lindy Street and Founder's Way, I think it's important to underscore that because the post road is their only way in and out, that's the only way that emergency vehicles can come in and out, and that's the only way these folks can get in and out. So if the traffic is ever blocked beyond Lowman's Plaza, if these folks have a family emergency or something of that sort, they're not gonna be able to get out. I heard a lot of talk about likening this to a bank, and particularly TD Bank did fail. Sheila brought that up. Likening this to a CVS. CVS transactions are very long, and I think that's worth reviewing. Other new potential sites in Connecticut are Torrington, Newington, and Meriden. These towns have nothing in common with Orange. Think about those towns and their desirability. Would you want to live in any of those towns? I don't think you would. Why would we make Orange the first location in Connecticut? By my math, 30 million in annual sales, it is 416 cars. The applicant claims that they'll have a 50% increase in business, yet their product line is 80% recreational. So I think that the 416 number might even be low, because I estimate it to be an 80% increase in their traffic over their current location. Again, going back to likening this to a bank. Banks close at four. Banks are only open on Saturday morning. Banks are closed Sunday. None of this is applicable to this application. I heard a lot of straw man arguments about that corner with vape shops and tattoo parlors and VIP. Well, let's not make this Potterville, you know, as a Wonderful Life reference. Let's not turn this into the Berlin Turnpike. Why make a bad situation worse with this kind of store there? Another thing I wanted to speak to, which was kind of palpable, that I'm sure that everyone here that isn't on the clock kind of felt, and I'm sure people watching too, was how ad hoc and highly dubious these traffic experts were. I mean, that was like a comedy of errors. I mean, everyone was feeling it. I'm convinced it doesn't have skin in this game. It was almost embarrassing. The architect on the phone likened this project to Las Vegas. Think about that in Nevada. Think about that imagery for a second. I got more. It just kind of went on and on. Trout Brook is in the northeast corner of the parcel. It is reasonable to request that the storm water be dumped into a sewer and not into Trout Brook, if there's going to be that many more cars than TD Bank had. We want this application to go through inland and wetland commission. I think that it is such a different application that it needs to go through that channel. Cars turning left on the post road will certainly get broadsided and T-boned. I know that they like this location. I know they like the vault because they're worried about security issues and so forth, but it really doesn't fit. It's too much building on too small of a lot. Ideally, what they need is more parking and a smaller building. All of this traffic queuing and so forth is kind of predicated on the notion that all of their clientele are these law-abiding, Jeffersonian, highbrow types that are going to respect traffic laws and not have aggression and so forth. I mean, it's ridiculous to assume that everything is just going to go smoothly. Think of the holiday demands. Think about 4th of July, what that would be. Think about New Year's, what that would be, how much more traffic they would have. The applicant clearly tried to ram through an insufficient application and plan. That was exposed tonight. For whatever reason, whether it's cost or to expedite things, corners were cut, and it was not done properly. In my opinion, it needs to be rejected on that alone, but at minimum, it needs to go through planning and zoning, I mean inland-wetland commission. There's no talk of what... Of security with regard to loading and unloading. Do they have armed guards? I think that's relevant, too. I don't want to take too much more of your time. Sorry for the responses. They were just in response to what was going on tonight. I didn't have prepared remarks. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim?
I've heard a lot more opinions tonight, whether they might be right or wrong, and watched the last two sessions at home from my own TV. Glad for you people. Some of the things that approach my commission are sometimes spicy, but this month, you've won the prize, and we're getting off a little easier. But I think, to start with, and some of you thank the commission and recognize that they get faced with decisions that you may agree with or may disagree with, but they're here to represent all of you and the rest of the 14,000 people in town. So I think, and I hope, that a lot of the disrespect that was shown to this group and their dedication to the town of Orange by every one of these people sitting here is understood, and maybe you got a little clearer view of what they put themselves out for. They do it for all of you, for the town. And no, we won't always agree. But as the chief official of the town, usually I'm approached by many different potential suitors to the town of Orange. This was one of them. This morning, we had a meeting with representatives from a company from Finland. We have a couple other things going on. The self-storage that was approved earlier tonight, that was also before us in the beginning. The state of Connecticut legalized cannabis sales. I'm not a user, consumer, or anything else as Shayna so boldly recognized for herself earlier at this podium. But it was made a legal possibility in the state by the people that all of you and others in this state vote for to represent your thoughts. I questioned things when they came before us about the money, about the security, about the operation. I called Washington to find out how do they deal with the money after we had discussions in my office about this? And the response I got from the Attorney General's office in Washington, DC was, "Well, if your state has approved it and made it legal, the Attorney General wouldn't be pressing any sort of charges on any banks processing income derived from that business, since the state has made it a legal substance." So I said, "Okay." And we had discussed money and how much money it takes to do this type of operation. And somebody alluded to the fact that it was a done deal, because the town might get money out of it. I don't jump for money for anybody. And so anybody who thought that it was a done deal, because this first selectmen was possibly looking at a different revenue source for the town of Orange, is sadly mistaken. There is a potential for a 3% payment of money that's submitted by the vendor to the state of Connecticut, which could be a significant amount of money, if you do the math with what has been discussed here. There's a lot of armchair quarterbacks here tonight counting their money for them. I learned long ago, I don't count money for other people, and I've never seen other people's bank accounts, so I can't tell you what they have or what they make. But it is significant, no matter what. But that money is also limited as to what it's supposed to be allowed to be used for within the town budget. So I called Office of Policy and Management, trying to find out, because it could be a significant amount of funds, and you can only make up so many directions for police officers, for the drug squad that we participate in, and other, the DARE program, and a lot of things like this. So the state legislature kind of hamstrung us that it has to be used for these type of expenses. So I called Office of Policy and Management and spoke to a person up there that we deal with regularly. I said, "What happens if there's money left over from that money that we derive from their sales that we received, that they had input?" I said, "Are we allowed to put that into our general fund? Or can we use it in the budget for other items other than as it's prescribed?" They didn't know, and they're gonna get back to me. It's been probably most of a month now. So there's still no answer as far as that. I think it would ultimately end up a general fund, and then you could infuse some of it back in, whether it be for education or police or something like that. But Hartford did this to every community in the state. I think New Haven has two of these coming also, I did see on the news. But they didn't, typical in Hartford fashion, they didn't dot all the i's and cross all the t's as they were pushing this through. And so now you get a commission that is facing a damned if you do and damned if you don't because of so many answered possibilities with this. They did the same thing, the legislators, to entice communities. We receive a quarterly check, I think it's quarterly, of about $4,000 to $6,000 for all those little nipper bottles that they sell at the package stores. Well, there's a tax on that. And Orange's share is, I think, $6,000. I think we're gonna direct it towards, actually, the finance director, and I have talked about directing it towards the recycling committee. I hate those damn little bottles. Every time I'm out cutting the grass, I live by a traffic light at Orange Center Road, and you hit them all with a lawnmower and keep sending them out in the street, because they pull up to the traffic light, take their hit, and throw it out the window. So this is something that's a concern with your cannabis. I understand that. Are they gonna be drinking and driving, or smoking and driving? Are there regulations against this? There's a lot of unanswereds out there. But that's not the fault of the applicants that are here tonight or this commission. They were both posed to consider something. You have one of the finest zoning attorneys in the state of Connecticut representing them, and she wouldn't represent something if she thought it was, you know, as my grandmother used to say, the black hand. If you're old Italian, you would understand what that meant. It wasn't good. And Tom knows. And Ms. Shansky would never put herself in a position that could affect her credibility or her position known across the state for expertise in zoning. So I think this commission has listened and concerned, and they see the changes that the post road has seen over 400 years. 400 years, from a cart path to a truck road prior to 95. Right there where Hitchcock Plaza is was Yale Truck Yard and Luspinos Diner. We used to go there for breakfast after church. I would always have rice pudding. Remember Luspinos? Yep. Cigarettes for 40%. Cigarettes, there you go. You know, but times change, markets change, and this commission is faced with different changes. Self-storage. Self-storage's a wonderful use, but in my house, if we don't use it for a long time, throw it out, don't pay every month to store it. But you know what? There are people who want that, so it's a desirable business. This commission has to consider that situation. We've seen many changes on the post road. Unfortunately, when Lindy Street was put in, the post road was a little bit different place. The post road has changed. I remember, right where you people are complaining about Trout Brook, some of you who may have lived on Lindy Street way back then, there was a landscaper in that first house behind TD Bank, and there's a piece of that land that goes with that first house. It's actually his own commercial, and he had all his landscaping equipment and everything there. Nobody worried about contaminants in the Trout Brook then, because he was one of the residents over there. But I'm sure there was probably, it wasn't a great situation then, and our zoning prior to Jack, you know, had to deal with that and address those issues there. I have to laugh. Somebody, I think it was maybe McGrew, who called Hitchcock Plaza Lowman's. I was laughing, because I watched Jack. Jack's not old enough to even know where Lowman's was.
Never even heard of it.
That's what it was, the anchor was originally. But I think that the biggest concern I heard tonight... Well, actually, there's one that's kind of a little funny. I can make a joke of it, so please don't get mad, because it's only just a little levity, but another small business bites the dust due to online shopping, I learned tonight. The corner drug dealer is going out of business because of what the one speaker said, you just order online and you go in and pick it up. So even that is in the online venue now, which just boggles an old person's mind, which I'm in that category. But I am concerned, and I'm gonna ask Attorney Shansky to find out. I'm not asking for your answer tonight, but you'll need to do a review with your staff and staff and find out if the appropriate paperwork was filed for this application. I understand the Engineer Trinkus, is that his name, who spoke, and he may have made some valid points. They may have been opinions. I can't answer it, but I think that if that is the situation, I'm afraid that this is gonna have to start again. So I ask you to look into that and let the appropriate people... So I ask you to look into that and let the appropriate people know if all of that is a plus or a minus. I trust this commission. It's kind of like a good negotiation. When you leave the table, somebody is happy, somebody is not so happy. That's generally a pretty good negotiation. So we're going to see, and this commission has to make a very difficult decision. However, Orange won't be the only place selling recreational marijuana. It's coming, and it's, like I said, I saw on the news where New Haven has two proposals before them. And something that is very important is parenting. And, you know, children need to understand, and there's always a percentage that gets swept in. Unfortunately, I have five family friends who have lost children to drugs. There's five young people, I've been to funerals, that have died from drugs. So none of us are immune to it. It's something that happens as our society changes. As you get a more relaxed society, some of these things happen. So parenting, to me, is the most vital thing that you can do for your children. Yes, there may be 17 children on Lindy Street, but there's over almost 1,400 children in the elementary school system. We send 51% of the children that are in the Amity School System to Amity. Parenting is the most important thing. The DARE program isn't going to do it all for you. Parenting is what needs to be. And sometimes, some do it better than others, but parenting is so important for all of us to help our children. So, Commission, I know you're just about done. I think there's another person wants to speak next. Let's make the right decision for the Town of Orange.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else?
Just a quick comment.
Yeah, please.
Gabriella Kurpios, 348 Lindy. Gabriella K-U-R-P-I-O-S. So from what I understand, Mr. Ziole, it's for the dispensary to open.
All right, we're not going to have a debate. Just make your comments, if you would.
So in the previous meetings, we asked about the bus transportation of customers that are going to be coming to the dispensary. We didn't get an answer on that. We still don't know what happens and how long it will take when they get off the bus and then wait around. We also haven't discussed the bus drop-off of our children that is right by the bank. And no one has mentioned what would happen to our kids and where they will be dropped off and picked up. And again, I just want to ask you again to remember what really, most of us have been talking about is the traffic. We really have a hard time getting out of our street to get onto the Post Road. Holidays is impossible. And to block us that way, to come through the Hitchcock Plaza, it's just, it wouldn't be fair, and it just sounds, it sounds like a bad decision. So I urge you to really think about the traffic mainly. The traffic is going to be unbearable. It already is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is it. This is the last, I hope everybody, otherwise we'll get them at the next meeting.
Sheila Panza, I know it's late. I just need to clear up one thing, and it has to do with a comment about done deal. So done deal referred to the fact that we knew that there was a moratorium on the dispensaries. What we didn't realize is that had been lifted because we were anticipating that there would be a referendum where we would, the town would get to vote. And we were taken off guard when we saw in the paper that it was, we had an applicant, it was approved, that Orange was going to be permitting cannabis. And that's what that done deal was in reference to. Different, going forward, we would like to see a different kind of information being sent out to the public about these planning and zoning because for the people that actually knew about it, all three of them, you know, that worked for them, but for the rest of us, most of us don't get the New Haven Register, and if they do, they're not looking at the notices. And I, and also, perhaps we could start a Facebook page, and I'd be willing to help with that for the Town of Orange where people could log on and they'd be notified, you know, other than people going on the website, because people don't go on the website and say, "Gee, I wonder what's happening with, you know, this planning and zoning this week."
Yeah, you know, I'm quite sure that what's required by law gets done every single time an application comes to us.
If you sign up through the website.
I did now, yes.
You get automatically.
I guess it had to do with the fact that we thought it would be like when there's a referendum for taxes or, you know, we get flyers in the mail. And the reason why the town gets flyers, sends out the flyers because they know people don't go in.
You automatically get.
I know that now. Thank you.
All right.
And also, thank you for acknowledging that this is a special situation with the location abutting a residential property and your consideration of this.
Thank you. All right. You're going to, what do you, you want to rebut all these comments now? And we'll be here till?
Yeah.
Huh?
And we'll keep the public hearing open.
I think at this point, you know, we just, we have a lot of, starting with, early this morning, we started getting papers dumped on us that we haven't had a chance to spend any time reading. And we've had more papers delivered to us this evening, which I'd like to review in greater detail. And I'm not sure that we should close the public hearing at this point.
It would require another extension. And we, based on my account, we, right now, have a total of 28 days that have been extended. We have a maximum, sorry, we have a maximum of 65, so we have 37 days left. Of course, that has to be consented to by the applicant.
It has to be consented by the applicant.
Yeah.
I don't have that authority standing here right now.
The applicant is here, is she?
Yeah, I'm looking at her too. And perhaps I could speak with her for a moment.
Why don't you do that? Otherwise, we're going to, it's going to be a much, much longer evening because we'll be here.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Till 3:00 in the morning.
Pardon me, Marjorie Shansky, for the record, there are a couple of things for which rebuttal must be made this evening so as not to leave in your mind the information provided by members of the public who, I'm guessing, did not listen to anything that any of our team said.
The problem is, and they're going to want to rebut what you say.
Well, that's within your control, sir.
So that's why we're not going to do it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant should get rebuttal, and then that should be the end of the hearing. The applicant went, the public went, now the applicant gets rebuttal, and that should be the end of the hearing.
Didn't the first selectman just ask the Ms. Shansky?
And I have an answer for the first selectman and a couple of other things.
The way that this proceeding goes is the applicant presents, the public presents, and then the applicant rebuts, and that's the end.
End. And so while I appreciate, just for discussion purposes, your interest in keeping your hearing open, it can't be open for this dribb of Google-identified information that is just papering the file, frankly.
Well, I had some questions on the deliveries, how often.
No, no, and that's legitimate, and we want all of your questions. And I've got a team, a cast of thousands here this evening, and optimally.
All right, why don't you proceed with your rebuttal?
Or do you want me to talk to my client?
No, proceed with your rebuttal.
We're going to continue tonight.
Did you have another application after this, right?
There is another application.
That we would also have to talk with that applicant about a possible extension.
No, I'll be happy to speak. I want to, let me first respond to the first selectman. I've never had a conversation so indirectly. It was rather charming. I spoke to Mr. DeMergen when I received Mr. Trinkus's letter, and I've known Mr. Trinkus for many, 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 many years, and I understand that he's here to identify what he thinks are issues in order to make this difficult. Your regulations permit the preparation of a site plan by an architect. Period. End of story. There's nothing untoward, incomplete, or inappropriate about what has been before this commission, and it has been augmented, if you will, by its similarity, distortions notwithstanding, its similarity to the as-built. There is no site alteration except for these canopies. And your, Mr. Chairman, I was going to call you your honor. Mr. Chairman, your honor, I have authority to suggest to you that if that is inhibiting to you, we'll just turn the key and do interior renovations and leave the site as it is. If that is an impediment to you, you may modify this application by saying, "Just move into the building, don't change the site." We can do that because we have more than met the parking standard as it is. Or I have, and this is not exclusive of my rebuttal, I need to make my rebuttal, I also have authority to say, Commissioner Cornell, you want to get rid of the second Lindy Street driveway? We will retain two of the three drive-throughs and eliminate that driveway. You may modify our site plan because you can approve, deny, or modify, and eliminate that driveway. We'll keep two of the three, and that will help ameliorate flow. So having responded, do you see how quiet this room got when I said that? This room got very quiet. So the comments of Mr. Trinkus about the conformity of the site to the 2004 manual and the 2002 guidelines is not true. And Mr. DiStefano from the engineering company of record can say that as well as I can say that, but it's simply not true. There's an existing Storm Scepter 900 unit. There is stormwater management on this site. Whether we take the canopies off or not, the degree of imperviousness does not change. And so treated water is what we're talking about. We're not talking about mere stormwater runoff. The delivery vehicles are Sprinter vans, they're 18 feet, they aren't UPS trucks, they aren't Federal Express trucks, they're these vans, and they are adequate, the parking array, an arrangement is adequate for their movements in and out. I continue, so sorry. The population of Great Barrington is 6,852. I don't know, because I was not given a copy of the materials received by the commission, but that is not a similar community, and it is in Massachusetts where the legislature just changed the law to eliminate, unless proven, that a sort of incremental security fee that's in the state of Connecticut because they are not having problems. Chief Gagni reached out to operators in Massachusetts, and there are no issues. Fall River, Massachusetts, population 93,884. They're just not analogous situations, so they don't really have a bearing on your considerations here today. Ms. Zamba was misquoted about the 20 temporary spaces at the Hitchcock Plaza. They are not because the parking on the site is inadequate. The parking on the site exceeds the parking standard. That's shown on the box at the top of the right on the site plan. They are there in the event, she said, for flexibility or to be able to pivot, or, it was a great word, whatever it was she said, in the event that there were something excessive or exciting about the initial opening of the facility. That's what they're there for. They're not there as an everyday need or occurrence. How many speakers said, "Orange will be the first, it's going to draw all this traffic"? Ms. Zamba's testimony. There are none now. They're likely going to become active in January. If, God willing, this commission were to approve these applications, they won't even be at a building permit in January. And on page six of her demonstration materials today, there's one on Whaley Avenue in New Haven, there's one in Branford. These are people who are all ready to open when the go-line, when the green light goes on.
Marjorie, these, just for clarification, when you say they're ready to open, these are going to be recreational and.
Correct. These are hybrid institutions. And there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, right here on page 6 of the exhibit you've got today. Orange is not the first. In fact, some of the prospective Orange traffic is going to be absorbed by Whaley Avenue in New Haven and by Branford. So, you know, that's, that's not true, what was said. We have a traffic report, and the traffic report has been peer-reviewed. And so while I appreciate, I've driven the Post Road on a Saturday, I know, we have reporting as your regulations require, and that have been corroborated sufficiently by the peer reviewer. I appreciate that Mr. Parks is very, very against this operation, and his, the bulk of his testimony would have been better presented at the legislature prior to the decriminalization of marijuana or cannabis by the legislature. As the first selectman said, it is legal. This commission has adopted a regulation, and we are now here to demonstrate our compliance with the standards in your regulation. Somebody queried rhetorically, "Why would we make Orange the first location? It's not going to be the first location. It's going to be the ninth location or 10th location." I don't know what else is in the pipeline out there. The traffic reporting was not ad hoc. It was methodical. It was reviewed. It was augmented and supplemented and to the satisfaction of the peer reviewer. Seemed to be a lot of internal information about what people know about TD Bank. I don't know why they're not there. I don't know that we've heard why they're not there. The appropriate paperwork was filed. The application is not incomplete. You have the ability to approve, deny, or modify a site plan. I've provided you with a couple of alternatives. Maybe you'd like to ask a question or two about that. And with respect to the special use permit, we have established in layers of record material our conformity with the standards in the regulation that is so highly regulated by the state of Connecticut and reflected in your regulations as to provide assurances of the type of operation that we are trying to introduce into Orange by an experienced operator. Mr. Gorman, the head of security, is in the room. If there's something you need to know, please ask him now. Mr. DiStefano is in the room. Mr. DeAndrea is in the room. Ms. Zamba is in the room. If you have questions, please let us answer them now so that you feel as though there's nothing open that is probing in your heads.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for?
So, sorry, Attorney Shansky, just to clarify, the applicant is willing to redo the site plan to close the second access point. the site plan to close the second access point at the rear of Lindy Street and circulate up to the front.
I beg your pardon. Could you speak up just a tad?
I'm sorry. It's getting late. Did you say the applicant would consider shutting down the access point closest to the neighborhood and diverting the traffic around to the first access point up by the Post Road? Is that...
That is what I said.
Okay.
And retaining two of the drive-throughs, not just one.
Okay, so it would be the Post Road and there, and so, it would be subject to that being approved by the town engineer or who, since that would happen in your best possible case, since that work would be happening after the action, who reviews that?
Well, I think the town engineer would see it indeed, but it is within your authority as a modification.
Something of that scale is...
Sure.
Okay. One small one that I don't think is going to stretch the wrinkles out of the brain is that the cannabis special standards require a trash enclosure.
Require what?
A trash enclosure.
Yes, there's a trash enclosure in the back of the site plan.
You know, I'm sorry, the scale is so small. I'm not seeing any of this. It says "in dumpster." It doesn't say that there is a enclosure, ma'am. Oh, now it says, okay.
Trash enclosure?
Page, page, you know, Plan 7. Okay, never mind.
No, we're happy, happy to answer these and any questions. Want you to...
Can somebody speak to the number of deliveries, the time of day, how many a day?
Ms. Zamba.
Can somebody speak to when the receipts are taken off-site? What does that look like? How often Brink's draw, circulation on the site?
Sure. Tim can speak to the money moving off of site. As for deliveries, our, I believe it's in Exhibit B, our statement of use, we receive roughly eight deliveries per week. That's what we're anticipating with adult use. The deliveries come via unmarked Sprinter van. They are not set on a known pattern. They are randomized, and, you know, to the commentary regarding Milford leaving the backdoor vans open, we have very specific protocols here. We have seat-to-sale tracking that we must adhere to. We receive a manifest in advance. We double-check that manifest against the order that we have placed. We then take that manifest and confirm, that is, the order that we placed, we confirm the boxes, and then that cultivator goes on their way. Once the manifest has been confirmed, delivery received.
I just wanted to tie that up just slightly because of the comment that was made. So, is there one driver?
Tim, can I get, there's two, yeah, two, sorry.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know. Okay.
Good evening. For the record, Tim Gorman, I'm the Vice President of Asset Protection for Green Thumb. To your question on deliveries, there are two drivers. The rear entry will be used. There's a security device called a mantrap, so two doors. When the outer door is open, the internal one is locked so that we can bring the product quickly inside. And then, as the outer one's locked, that would open the internal door so product can come in.
Is there a time during the delivery process that the product is unguarded and the doors of the van are open?
No. As far as cash, we have a professional cash transit service, similar to Brink's, things that you're familiar with. We have a company that is unmarked. It comes at varying times. We, of course, know the times, but we vary the patterns. They come multiple days a week, and it's a very similar process. Comes through that same doorway so that there's a safety mantrap from the exterior into the mantrap then into the interior of the store.
Does that conclude your rebuttal, or?
Well, when you say that, I must look one more time. Yes, I believe it does, Mr. Chairman, although I notice a notation here. There was never a direct statement that 80% of the product is going to be recreational. That is not what Ms. Zamba said, and if you want clarity from that, she's right here. The record is complete. The application is complete, and we've supported all of your standards with substantial evidence.
Okay.
We are grateful for the time and attention that the commission has given to this application, and we urge its approval.
Thank you.
Because it's eligible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we talk about, or consider closing the public hearing, I have a couple of letters to read into the...
Okay. One thing when you're done.
Well, you can do it now if you want. I'll wait.
No, you go first.
So, Attorney Shansky made an offer for the possible modification of the site plan based on Kevin's, I think, well-founded concerns of traffic pattern. And how do we, do we vote on that first, or do we send it to one of our town officials? We can do that after the closing of the public hearing.
We can always get advice from our town officials, from our...
Yes. I did ask Mr. Dandrea, and I think this was the productive interim conversation as well, about the validity of the conclusions, even with that modification. And he indicated to me, and he's in the room, so he can speak for himself, that that was okay.
Right. Oh, thank you. So, no, I was just, I was, my concern was, I would like to get some clarification from the town engineer at some point. I wanted to make sure that the closing of the public hearing is not going to prevent that.
You always have access to town staff.
Kevin, would you want to?
Well, so, before you move to close the public hearing, I think as a threshold question, you've got to decide, if I was to put Mr. Tinkus' comments on a bumper sticker, basically, they would, they amount to the town engineer and the zoning enforcement officer exceeded their authority in determining that the changes were de minimis and did not require the re-engineering and re, you know, redoing of all of the plans in accordance with the laundry list of the site plan requirements. So, so, we, you should, if you're going to move, close the hearing, we should be comfortable with the analysis that they, in fact, were authorized to determine that the materials submitted were adequate for our review because they were reflective of existing conditions done to current standards according to the testimony we've heard.
Right. You know, again, we can consult with counsel as to their authority, as to whether they exceeded their authority or not. But I don't see how it requires any, I don't, how would that affect our...
If you decide to close the public hearing...
Yeah.
And they should have, at the beginning of the process, said, "You know what? In an abundance of caution, treat this like a site plan from the beginning. Start with a wetlands permit. You know, fully engineer, re-engineer the drawings, or hire the same engineer to recertify them."
Yeah.
And put together the whole list.
Well, we could deny the application for their failure to accomplish those things. Well, it's all part of, it's all part of the record.
Well, we had pre-application meetings with town staff. We had individual meetings with town staff.
I'm not saying it would be a good decision. I'm just, I'm saying...
No, I'd like to avoid even the bad decisions.
We could, you know, it's within our purview to make that decision. If you think that the whole, the application is flawed because of those things and needs to be denied on that basis, as a matter of law, we'd get advice from counsel, and we could decide that.
I must repeat, and I apologize if I've cut you off, I must repeat that the zoning enforcement officer has corroborated that an architectural site plan is fine. Your regulations, even Mr. Trinkus says that your regulations provide for it, and we've been through a cumulative process where everybody...
I know.
Has signed off on it.
I know.
We've got to be able to infer something from that.
Right. But, I mean, you don't disagree that we could do that. I mean, I...
I haven't...
I think, isn't that your question, though, really?
No, I guess, and I'm sorry if I'm getting a little muddled with the time, is, what I'm saying is, once, once we close the public hearing, we've got the information we've got.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you wanted them to create new information, you'd have to deny them and start over. Right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess that's why, I guess that's why, when we close the public hearing, I asked the question, is, are we ready to close the public hearing? You know, do we think we need information from any other source in order to make a decision? So, you know...
Is there additional information that you need, Ms. Commissioner Cornell?
In order to make a decision on the application.
Well, excuse me, Kevin, if I may. Commissioner Cornell made the point at a recent meeting that we were lacking verification of the site plan's accuracy. And after just a cursory trip over there this morning, I found a dimensional flaw in that site plan. So, I'm personally not comfortable with the technical quality of what we've received. I was there for all of five minutes.
Well, we started this process in July, and, and it's, you know, interesting, but we've also offered to eliminate any site activity and simply move into the building. The site exists.
Then, fine. Going to scale the whole thing back?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm with you, Kevin. I am not comfortable with the technical quality of everything.
Well, so, the information has been flowing in, you know, to a point now where we have engineering testimony from the people who originally designed. You know, we've seen the applicant move forward on showing more of those, you know, technical elements, and if they, and if they, you know, do a, you know, modify the plan to eliminate the back driveway, they'd have an opportunity, you know, to update the dimensional accuracy question.
Right. I would minimally, I'd like to see them do that.
Well, that could all be part of the modification.
I think we're owed at least that much. You know, as I said, for me to spend five minutes at the site and find things that are a foot and a half out of, away from where they should be...
We would be interested in your notes from that experience.
Well, it wasn't much of an experience, but I'd be happy to share my notes.
All right, let me read these letters into the record from...
Before we get to the chief here, let me just read the last one in front of the member of the public. Be quick. This is from Martha Judd at 142 Porter Lane. "Good evening, Commissioners. I'm reaching out to ask you to reconsider the special use permit for Southern CT Wellness and Healing to open up a retail establishment to sell recreational cannabis. You may ask why I'm just reaching out now and not prior to the September 6th public hearing. At that time, I did research the Southern CT Wellness and Healing facility in Milford, and it was my understanding that it was just sold, that it just sold cannabis for medical use. To reinforce this fact, during the September 20th public hearing, it was stated that they would be moving their medical facility from Milford to Orange, and that the Milford facility is currently for medical use. During the September 6th hearing, Southern CT Wellness stated a pharmacist would be onsite, another reason why I thought the Orange facility would sell cannabis for medical use. In addition, I believe the moratorium on cannabis was still in place at the time, at that time. I do support the use of cannabis and other medications when patients are faced with debilitating and painful diseases and chronic conditions and support, quote, 'a medical facility.' I do not support opening up a retail facility for individuals to purchase cannabis for recreational use. It wasn't too long ago when individuals were being arrested for selling, purchasing, and using cannabis. We continue to try to teach youth that drugs should not be used to escape life's challenges. Unfortunately, cannabis is the beginning of a slippery slope. We do not need to encourage our youth and our residents to start down the slope. Either reject a special use permit or attach a condition to the permit allowing the facility to operate only as a medical cannabis facility and not allow a retail cannabis facility. Thank you for your consideration."
All right. And I have two letters from Chief of Police Robert Gagni. They're addressed to me. First letter is dated October 26, 2022. "Dear Mr. Parenti, this letter is in response to your request for more information regarding the application of Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing Dispensary at 175 Boston Post Road. You are aware, as is the applicant, of my letter to you dated November 12, 2021, articulating my opposition to legalize recreational marijuana, as well as my opinion that allowing retail sales would not be a good fit for the town of Orange. With the openness of the town to end the moratorium and changes zoning regulations to allow retail sales, coupled with the overt support by at least one selectman and the seeming lack of opposition by the community, my role in this matter changed from advisory on the moratorium, and I pressed myself to keep an open mind. The issue that came before me was now restricted to traffic and safety at the site versus my opinion on safety as it relates to general legalization. I assembled key members of our leadership team, and we participated in an onsite visit on July 12, 2022. After reviewing the physical premises and the written security plans, we came to the determination that security would be robust at this site. One of my initial concerns regarding potential burglaries and robberies was lessened by the applicant's diligence and the fact that the business would be operating out of a former banking institution. Part of the concern was the amount of cash on hand because of the issue of banks not engaging in business with cannabis retailers due to federal banking laws. The federal government continues to contemplate legalization on at least a piecemeal basis, and there is a future potential for allowing banks to conduct business with cannabis retailers in the states that have legalized sales. This is not currently in place. The applicant came before the Traffic Authority, which, as you know, serves as our Board of Police Commissioners on September 12, 2022, and received unanimous approval after a review of the application, and traffic study determined that traffic would not be an issue. I believe that a peer review will concur with that assessment. I have had conversations with the Chiefs of Police in Milford, Branford, and Westport, where Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing currently has establishments. Like me, these chiefs were and are still opposed to recreational legalization, as are most of our colleagues in the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. However, legalization has occurred, and we will diligently police whatever issues result in our communities. My conversations revealed that there have been no issues in any of the mentioned municipalities because of the presence of the Southern Connecticut Wellness and Healing establishments other than some congestion in Milford. In Westport, there were, there was public opposition to the establishment, which is located adjacent to million-dollar condominiums. The residents' concerns were unfounded, as there have not been any issues or complaints. Property values have not deteriorated. It is important to note, however, that these establishments have been... It is important to note, however, that these establishments have been engaged in sales of medical products, with Branford only recently moving to the hybrid model to include recreational sales. I hope this letter has provided you with the additional information you were seeking. Sincerely, Robert J. Gagney, Chief of Police. And then he wrote me a letter later, a week or so later, November 1, 2022, again, from Chief Gagney, addressed to me. Dear Mr. Parenti, this letter is to supplement my last letter dated October 26, 2022. With no comparisons for recreational marijuana here in Connecticut, I contacted the Chief of Police in Northampton, Massachusetts, as recreational marijuana was previously legalized in that state, with sales beginning November 2018. New England Treatment Access in Northampton was one of the first two retailers in Massachusetts. Since then, Northampton has added additional establishments and now has 12. The chief indicated there have been no issues with any of the establishments and no negative impact on the community to date. Sincerely, Robert J. Gagney. All right. Any further questions of the applicant? All right. Is there, is, let's discuss then the question of whether to close the public hearing. Do we, you know, do we think we need information, any further information to make a decision on the, and when I say a decision, either approval, denial, or approval with modifications?
Well, the only reason that I would need additional information, and it's from the R officials, is the possible modification of the, of the plan.
Right.
So I don't see why we wouldn't close the public hearing, but that's just me.
I agree, because I, I agree because I think we'll just continue in this, in this path indefinitely with, you know, more added and more commented on, rebuttal, and so on and so forth. So if, if we're at a place where we have all the, I mean, I haven't read all the information because, as I said, most, a lot of it was presented today and this evening.
Chairman, keep in mind, because you have to make a decision on the intervenors, their applicant, his, their applications, and then you also have to make a decision on the application. So you have to make a number of decisions.
We can close the public hearing.
Yeah, you have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just to confirm, we have the same amount of time to act on the intervenor's application.
When you make a decision, you're going to be making more than one decision.
Understood.
So.
Not to make the decision tonight.
All we're doing tonight, if we vote.
Is closing the public.
Is closing the public hearing, and then what we'll do is discuss the application at our next meeting and hopefully come to a decision. Is everybody on board? Or not?
I'm absolute, that's my position, too, but my question is, how do we discuss as a board if we want to make that modification that, you know, seems, that would be interesting? Do we discuss that during the two weeks, or how do we?
Well, we could ask.
You could have a special meeting for work.
Well, we could, can we, can we ask Jack to have a conversation with the town engineer?
You do whatever you want.
Get his advice on it.
Sure, based on the comments.
We couldn't ask the applicant any questions after they submit it? If the public hearing's closed? If we get a modification, a new plan, are we allowed to ask you questions if the public hearing's closed?
You would be modifying the existing plans, and it would be subject to administrative review by the zoning enforcement officer and the town engineer?
So based on the changes you make, their plan that they would submit to me has to reflect those. If they don't, then it does not comply with the conditions set by the commission.
And it would have to also exhibit zoning conformity and dimensional accuracy, or re-whatever gets us to that level of finish that's been requested.
So, right, if you're going to, you're going to modify their plan.
We could approve, we could deny, or we could approve with modifications.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the special permit is also subject to conditions. So the special permit gets the possibility of conditions, and the site plan gets the possibility of modifications.
So again, if, for example, we were to approve it, would, it would, you know, it would be on the condition that the stormwater management is maintained.
Right, but there's a plan to submit it.
I don't know why I didn't pick this up before, but, so if we decide to modify, that would be part of our, if we decide to approve with modifications, that would be done our, at that hearing, meaning at the next hearing.
Yeah, I mean, we approve it as long as the applicant, the applicant closes off that second.
They don't make, they don't make changes to their current building. They close their thing, they, you know, or the condition that they operate during these hours.
I don't want to get too granular, but the provision of a stormwater maintenance plan would be a condition to the special permit as opposed to a site plan modification, because it's not really modifying anything, but it could be a condition of approval of the special use.
Yeah, right. We approve conditioned on closure of that driveway.
Yes.
And that's not. To get to the point where, do we discuss that, do we have to discuss that now, is my point? Or we can do, okay.
Well, now would be difficult because we don't have, we don't have the town engineer's opinion on it.
Right, no, I wasn't planning on voting. I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
You have to start with whether or not you're in favor or opposed, right? If you're opposed, that's the end of the conversation. If you're in favor, then are you in favor with conditions and modifications? Right, then you have a conversation.
So I will ask one more time. Somebody prepare to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion regarding this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Public hearing's closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm running out of tape.
I'm running out of tape.
We still have one more that we, at least have to speak with the applicant.
All right, let's give them five minutes to, no, let's give, let's give the.
Oh, then five minutes.
Okay.
All right. All right. Item number seven on our agenda this evening is an application for special permit in use and site plan application. This is submitted by Soli Engineering for property known as 88 Marsh Hill Road, and it's the proposed development of a travel, community travel center and drive-through facility and electric vehicle showroom with associated parking. As you recall, I have a conflict on this matter, and I need to recuse myself, so the vice chairman will run the meeting at this point.
Coward. He's a lightweight. All right, is, the applicant is here.
I'll take a seat in the.
Very patient applicant. Go for Paul B. Appert.
Could you go?
Yes, okay, so. It's a very late hour, so.
It is a very late hour, so we are prepared to go through, we did receive from the last meeting, we have received, again, sorry, for the record, my name is Matt Baldino. I am a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering.
Baldino?
Yes, B-A-L-D-I-N-O. We are prepared this evening to go through, we did receive peer review comments from WSP. We are prepared to go through those comments this evening, and we will be in attendance at the next Police Commission meeting on the 12th. With that being said, we are happy to go through those comments and provide an overview of some of the items discussed at the last meeting, but we do appreciate everyone's time, and given the late hour, we would understand if the commission would look for an extension, and we are willing to grant an extension to the next meeting, should that be requested.
I just think, in all fairness, you deserve fresh brains, and it's going on five hours.
Are we still here?
And for our 98-page presentation.
So, Tam, what's our, remind me, what's our next meeting date?
January 3.
January 3, and.
Just make sure they go first.
Yes.
I don't know about that. How long do they put in their time? Sorry, sorry, Chris, you always got to remind me.
I lost the call from the last one.
Heck, I was probably still on there, too. Thank you. Okay, so, Tam, you said January 3?
Yes.
Okay, so today is, well, my phone says it's the 7th now. Today is the 6th, so we would need, so we have 7, we have 21, basically 28 days until our next meeting.
Okay. What does that leave us with? Do we need to have?
We, well, we have an extension. We do have time for another extension if they were to consent to the next regularly scheduled meeting of January 3.
Which we are.
And by then, you would have the Safety Committee vote.
Correct. We would, we would meet with the Police Commission on the, on the 12th and have that.
Assume they would render a decision for the 12th. Obviously, we could take that into account here and have our traffic discussion, not only with the applicant, but with the referral from the Traffic Commission as well.
Understanding that we do have our, the peer review present as well.
Right, right. I'm just trying to see what we have.
Do you want to?
Would you rather?
We, we are, we were agreeable to providing an extension to the next regular scheduled meeting, which was on.
January 3.
January 3. Okay, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that extension.
Thank you, no, thank you for your time. Appreciate you sitting through that.
Thank you for all of that.
Yeah, I wish we had told you before.
Yeah, no, no real way to know that.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Brilliant, yes.
You didn't wait long enough.
All those in favor, we will conclude the meeting at 12:16.
December 28.